Oh, right. Okay, now. Is this live streaming and recording or just live streaming? Yes, what?
It's recording. Online streaming, but recording.
Not live streaming. Okay. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. It's Wednesday, November 12. San Rafael City Council has a special meeting. It's our city council retreat. And I will request this Madam's new clerk to call the hall.
Sure. Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
Just noting that Councilmember Yara Escalari is absent. And Mary Kate.
Present. So we have a quorum. So we have three agenda items this morning. And the way I'm going to handle public comment is we'll take it right at the beginning. And any members of the public can speak on any agenda items. Actually, they can speak on whatever they want. That's the way it works. And so you'll have two minutes. So you are requested or invited to say your name. And if you live in San Rafael, but not required. So if any members of the public would like to see, now is your opportunity. Hold on. Let me get my timers. You're on.
Good morning. My name is Gregory Andrew, and I live in San Rafael Meadows. And I'm going to speak to you about 3:50 Mary Dale Project. A project that we have been blindsided by. And is the whole process of deciding this project is not okay with us. You never came to us and asked for our input or opinion until you had already decided. So we're not opposed to homelessness. We appreciate that it's a difficult situation. We want to help you with that, with that problem. But this site and certainly this process is not okay with us. We need more time. We ask that you pause the whole process right now. That you take, that you not engage in this project on your November 17th agenda. That you take it off the agenda, that you restart the public process. Reach out to us, get our input. We are the public. Under the Brown Act, we're the ones that decide when information is important, not you. And so pause the project, take the time. We will work with you. We understand the problems. We understand the difficulty. But we have good input to give you. So do not move forward with this project. If you do, we will oppose you at every turn in your future as a council member or a mayor. So pause the project is our request.
Thank you. Thank you for being within the two-minute time limit. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I would. Ken Dickinson, also live in San Rafael Meadows. I would like to talk about the document here. The Governance, Roles and Responsibilities. Particularly on the Agreement, page two, the first bullet point, Perspective. Consider your district's interests, but always maintain a citywide perspective. Remain united in your service to the community. I would like to ask you, what is the normal norm for responding to citizens' requests of you? Even if they don't live in your district, what's a reasonable timeline to get back to somebody who writes you an email or makes a phone call to you and asks information of you to respond to them? What, you know, it would be great to have something like that in this document. What is a reasonable time to do that? And on page nine, what council members can do. A council member may publicly express personal views on local, state, national, or international issues. So I think it's appropriate that you can express your personal views to us if we ask for a meeting with you. Seems to say that, yeah. And council member may engage with constituents, community organizers, or the media on issues of public concern, gather input, and bring the information back for council deliberation. So when somebody in your district or not in your district reaches out to you with a phone call and an email, actually with several phone calls or emails, or when we notice one council member is never here, never here at meetings, and so is not getting any input at all. I think you have in here, I hope you have guidelines that will help you do the people's work, right? Thank you. Thanks so much.
Anybody else? If I cover. Yes, go ahead.
Amy Lightover. I live in Bristol Park and the president of the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods. First of all, thank you for the agenda. I think it's very interesting. It's very interesting to me. And first and foremost, I'm watching what the priority shift may be. It'd be fascinating. As you know, I'm also a mapping head for a pre-mast plan. I'm hoping that that will come up. But secondly, your handbook, the the Governance Handbook that you're looking at today. It's, your responsibilities are huge. Your jobs are huge. I understand that. And it really came home right that last morning. In fact, with the final document, I think that we should post it on our website so that our members and friends understand how this organization works, because I think a lot of us don't, you know. The other thing is, where do I go with a grammatical error in the handbook? I just mentioned it now.
You can mention or you can email Christine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we want.
That'll be helpful. Thank you for that.
So to date, probably, right?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then the other thing, there was a breakdown in communication between the Federation and the city manager's office. And and it's, it was very serious. And I met with Eli Hild, one of the Federation folks, because he's our council member, our district representative. And he suggested that I just send that email thread to him. And then it occurred to me this morning, I actually emailed you, you probably saw it, Eli, that this is sort of an inherent conflict with the district system. If there's a breakdown with a citywide organization, should I not then go to the mayor? Or do I go to the district representative? And so not wanting to bother you, I thought, well, I'm meeting with Eli anyway, I mentioned, he said, send it to me. And then I thought, well, that's probably inappropriate that he has a citywide organization communication breakdown. Okay, so I'm not quite sure. And I think that this handbook does not address that issue. I looked through your responsibilities, and I looked through your responsibilities. And if there's a breakdown in communication, who does it default to? I think that might be added.
Thank you. You're welcome. And just so you know, this is a public document, and it'll either be approved today and will be on the consent again, just for that reason, and on the website.
That's why I wanted to bring it grammatically.
We don't want any programmer. Won't see any other members of the public. Thank you all for your comments. So now we took public comment for the entire meeting at the beginning of the meeting. So we will roll right into the City Council Governance Agreements, Roles and Responsibility document, which I know is familiar to the council. And I'll just say for context, actually, I'll turn it over to the city manager that this conversation started with the previous city manager. As we realized as we transitioned from all at large to districts, and there are both new norms. And then there were also existing norms that might not apply anymore. So that's what this document is trying to, you know. And then are you going to do introductions with Kathy?
Yes, I'm going to start that as soon as I get this word away. Okay, I want to sit behind.
You're super good. So I'll take a deep breath.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Yeah, it was actually 2022 was the first version of this document. And so we're excited to have Kathy Capriola today, who is the vice president of MRG. Who was, I'm just going to do a quick intro, and then you can say. Worked in Marin County for a long time, Assistant City Manager in Nevada. Kathy was actually on my interview panel when I was hired 10 years ago with the city. Trusted advisor. And so I'll let Kathy introduce herself, and then we'll go on to go over the agenda for the day.
Okay, thank you, Christine. It's lovely to be with you today. I'm going to help facilitate the conversation. I'll also provide some context at points as a retired city manager, former city manager, and worked with a variety of councils. And so we'll provide some of that as we work through the topics. So I worked for five cities, retired as city manager of Sonoma, still live up there, and now do consulting across the Northern California. So pleasure to be with you all.
You just didn't get hired. Sorry. Just ignore the chair situation.
Sorry, sorry.
It's just, I feel a little short. Keep going.
I didn't know there was anything wrong with that, Kate. Feeling short. These are the ground. These are new chairs, so.
I don't know.
Maybe it's just me. It's fine.
One of those back there looks taller.
No, I know where they are.
That one right over there looks taller. Just, I'm tall as is.
Sorry, you guys.
You don't want to feel like you're the little kids.
I'm just small today. Okay. We're good.
So we're right on track.
Big chair.
It's 8:16.
Big chair.
Back to the agenda. Kathy has a few remarks before we go into the governance document. We'll take a break around 9:45, and then we'll talk about the process for handling emerging priorities in context of the strategic plan. And then around 10:30, we'll pivot to city council subcommittee appointments. And then we'll wrap up with next steps at the end of the, around 11:15 timeframe. So I'm going to turn it back to Kathy to start us off.
Great. Just, you all work really well together. I know that from having talked with Christine. But it's always helpful just to kind of remind a few ground rules and how to be productive. So if everyone can turn their cell phone off so we don't get interrupted and just refrain from looking at texts. The goal is really stay present today so we can have a deeper conversation. This is about how you work together. And how you work together really affects your impact as a council and as a community. So want to hear candid, honest conversations, facilitate conversations if need be, and hang off Christine and the mayor. And we'll go from there. Yeah, so maybe back up for this one. Let me give a little context. So within this governance document, there is a conversation about like do's and don'ts. And having worked with a lot of councils, sometimes like it can feel strange about like you can do this and you can't do that. And it starts to feel sometimes like when we're laying out these best practices as a city manager, like that we don't trust you, or we're vying for control. And I just want to say that's not what the documents are about. It's really about having some best practices so we don't trip over each other and create some unintended consequences. Because trust between each of you individually and the manager and the councils and the manager is what really makes an effective organization. And you get that trust by clarity and structure. So let me just kind of, I'm going to go through a few, a little bit of why some of these roles have occurred. And so there's really six reasons that come up about why it's good to work through the city manager. The number one reason is to keep the city manager in the loop. So you are holding Christine accountable, and I've been held accountable by my councils in the past. But it's hard to be held accountable if you don't know where things are, right? If you don't have the information. And when the city manager is not kept in the loop or loses visibility on things, then it's hard for them to be accountable and to try to serve the council's interests. So that's really reason number one. Reason number two is to protect the credibility of a council and the city manager. And here's what happens, and this is kind of an unintended consequence at times, where if a council member goes out to individual supervisor or a planner and asks for information, it signals to the staff, because they know what the rules are, that that council member doesn't trust the manager. And if it happens over and over, it starts to create confidence issues and a breakdown in trust in looking at how staff looks at council and how staff looks at the manager. So your manager is as good as the overall trust that you have in the organization and community believes that there is that trust. And so it can, that, it can create kind of weird rumors or different things that can also affect that. The third reason, which is also really important, is to ensure that there's really fair treatment of council members and an equal sharing of information. And if a manager is not aware of things, and if consistent channels aren't used to provide that information, then Vice Mayor Bushy may know something, but then I'm not able to share it with this council member. But I, because I don't know. And then that creates unfair treatment. And so that is part of what we're trying, one of the things that managers always doing is trying to make sure that there's good information and that you all have consistent information for policy conversations. So that's really reason number three. Reason four is really trying to avoid unintended consequences of what I'll call perceived power. And this is like, each of you are individuals, but you each have the power and the authority and the formal power of being a city council. You have relationships with staff. Many of you have been on council for a long time, and all of you have been on for at least three to four years. So there's relationships you have. So sometimes you may have an informal conversation, but to the staff member, because you're a council member, they don't hear it as an informal conversation. They hear it as direction. And so then they take that direction up the chain, which causes time and effort. And then the clarification comes back down the chain. And so I have a, I have a dear friend who's a landscape architect, council member down in Southern California. And he has conversations regularly with parks workers about the trees should be trimmed this way and this plant, because he cares so passionately. And yet it causes confusion with the park staff. And he doesn't realize his own power. He's like, I'm just having a conversation. I'm just Joe. I'm like, you're not Joe anymore. You're a council member. So you all, the perceived power issue is something, sometimes it's invisible, but it is, it is something that affects staff. And so it can, it can definitely cause confusion with staff. The fifth reason is to prevent inaccurate information or misinformation. So you might go to a planner or supervisor to get some information, and they know X about a topic. But because so much of our work is cross-siloed or cross-department, you have gotten that information, but you've missed this and this, because the department head or the city manager has a broader lens that they have full information. And so you get a slice, but you're not getting the full information. And sometimes it may be misinformation, which is unintended. So that's the other kind of reason to really make sure that good, consistent information goes to you and goes to the council as a whole. And the last reason frankly is to protect staff from awkward conversations, and this is not where you all are. But there have been, and it happens routinely, where staff gets placed in a no-win situation. Situation currently down on the peninsula, where I think either an assistant or a deputy city clerk was asked to do an illegal meeting by a council member. Asked and asked and asked, again, that power. It was done, and then it all blew up on everyone, including that staff. So again, not where you are. That's an extreme. But there is, staff can get caught up sometimes in political issues with council members or because, because of the lack of understanding of kind of the power and the chain. So these are, these are like some of the reasons and just some of the context that we have, what we have, some of these best practices. And again, the goal is to create structure and clarity to enhance and build trust. And so there's really role clarity, so everyone can do their job. So that's just a little, a little background about some of the whys as we think about these, go into this document.
Can I ask a question on that? It's more around terminology. So when we say city manager, and we are talking about people, right? Are we specifically talking about one person? Are we talking about the city manager's office?
I think we're going to go through, each organization defines what the levels are, right? And I think that's part of the conversation here. In this document, it reads city manager, assistant city manager, department heads, and even some key managers. Some organizations are clear, it's just the city manager at ACM. This document is written where you do have access. But it also talks about that if you are going to talk to one of those individuals, you're letting the city manager know, and that individual is going to let Christine know that you've had the conversation again to work around those six reasons so that information can be provided to everyone if needed. Is that helpful?
It is. And I think as we go through, I'm going to keep asking about the actual day-to-day process around that with the expectation that if I'm talking to the city manager, the assistant city managers might know already. I don't need to talk to three people to share the same information and vice versa. Because that's, right? So that's where it gets a little bit fuzzy for me. Like, I want to make sure I'm checking that box, but if I'm only talking to Angela, do I now need, like, oh, I had this conversation with Angela. Oh, I had this conversation with Angela, and make sure everyone knows. Or can I assume that that's already taken care of?
You can assume that if you talk to Angela or Donna, if it's assistant city managers, that they are going to brief me and let me know about any conversation you have or any correspondence that I'm not involved in. That's their job managing up is to make sure I have all of that awareness.
So we'll just, we'll keep going. Yeah.
And I usually copy Christine, like if it's via email, I will maybe, I know she's out of town, but I will still copy her.
Yeah. Helpful.
A good girl.
So the way we're going to handle this, and I think that, let me, let me back up for a second. So today's staff recommendation is to approve the document in the form where we leave it after this discussion. So I think the most efficient way to do this is, is to walk through particularly the new sections. Well, anything, we'll go walk through the whole document efficiently. And if there are comments or questions or requests for edits or clarification, we'll do that. When I say efficiently, what I mean by that is if we can do them quickly and swiftly and move on, then we'll do that in real time. If it's like, oh, this is going to take a little more time to clarify. Here are the questions. Here are the concerns. I'll take that back, work on it a little bit. So the form that it's in today, substantively, we'd like the council to approve. However, what we would do subsequently is, is to bring it to a regular city council meeting and pass a resolution so that it is codified formally in the record. Because one of the intentions of this document, we've talked about this before, but just as a reminder for the community, is it's not just for Christine, the city manager, and this mayor and this council. What we're really trying to do is create systems and clear processes so that they will outlive us and it will continue to promote a culture of how we operate. And we think we're a very, we are a very highly effective functioning team, and so we'd like that legacy to be carried on. Obviously, a future council could change direction with that. But this is something that I think not only is a helpful, useful tool for us and clarity and clear expectations, but that it will, it will live on. So that's why we'll bring it up for a resolution going forward. So any concerns or questions about what we're going to do next? I just need to share a screen.
You can direct us on our page for those as well.
I will.
Okay. Yep, appreciate that's important.
That, as big as it's going to get, Lindsay.
Yep. Can you help me take off the format? Can you help me?
Does, it's, it didn't get rid of, yeah, you can make your paper. There we go.
Yeah, that's big enough, isn't it?
Okay, page 13.
All right. So.
Or one.
Page one. We're not going to, we're not, I'm not going to read to you. You've had this document for years. Everything that's on page one.
I'm sorry.
No, it's two.
I'm taking one to the cover. Just for people that can't see that, like me.
Okay. Up through page three. Interactions outside of your district. That subsection, everything from the beginning of page two to the middle of page three is, there's no new edits or content in that section from what the council approved previously in this document at the last retreat. So my question is, any concerns, clarifications, in that first essentially page and a half of content?
Not seeing any.
Is there any need to put in mid-cycle changes could occur, blah, 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 blah?
In con-
In the event of, I mean, so for that, the council assignment, appointment assignments, that if there is a need or a change, that mid-change, we wouldn't need to necessarily, a council wouldn't necessarily need to wait till December, but it could be made. It's just for that flexibility. For whatever reason, someone says, I'm, I'm out, I'm done with this one, can we swap or do something?
You're saying mid-year on a, on a subcommittee council appointment.
Yeah.
I think.
Do we need to actually articulate that? I mean, it potentially could happen, but I mean, I don't know if it needs to be articulated.
I think it's inferred in just our general, regular process. So Lindsay, I'm checking with you. We passed this by resolution. If there was a need to do a swap or a change mid-year, we would just bring it back by a simple resolution.
Yeah, this specifically is referring to the retreat versus the action we take at the 12:15 meeting or the second meeting in December. So I think that's fine. It's just the process of making sure that you're all informed on what appointments you'll have for the following year.
Right.
And I think that happened to me this year with my insurance. There was an opportunity to join.
Yes. So. Although it's not a subcommittee, but yeah.
Right.
It's an appointment. So I did get some really great feedback from all of you, as well as from Kathy. And so what I did in the document is I made a few track changes, just as suggestions in response to that feedback. So that yellow highlight that says the city council will approve the annual appointment assignments in regular city council meeting in December of each year is, oh, shoot, is just to clarify that the facilitation in this session is not the formal action for Brown Act purposes. Any other comments or questions before I move on? This next section, Communication with Other Elected Officials, Council Teamwork, Professional Management, Staff Interaction, and Protocols, those, that content is all same as last year, up until the communication with staff, where you start to see some yellow highlight there. Any comments or questions up to that point? Seeing none?
Okay.
No, I do, I just highlight, I appreciate the examples substantive, so I think that was, I don't know.
We're going to go, we're going to go over that in just a second.
Okay.
I was just saying up into that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
So this was a suggestion by Kathy under the Communication with Staff section. And it's that reciprocity. It's that council members keep me informed, and that department directors, assistant directors also will copy me on their communication. So that same, you know, everybody in the same loop has the same visibility to the same stuff that's happening in real time. And then just to point out that the clarification in this document, none of this is really new protocol. It's really just a deeper clarification and understanding. So somebody else could pick up this document and say, okay, I really understand how it works and when a council member needs to include a city manager in their communication, and when it's okay to just send an email. And so the way we've tried to differentiate is talk about substantive versus non-substantive. So, and this kind of speaks to what Kathy was saying, is if you're asking for actual work to be done, if you're talking about timelines or priorities and city initiatives, if there's a request for staff to do a particular thing, take, prepare a material. Any concerns about staff performance in the organization should come directly to the city manager. And but when you're like trying to get just basic information, like, hey, Angela, I can't find this on the website. Could you send me a link to it or something? Like, I don't need that level of visibility. I mean, that's just like information exchange. So. Yeah, so it just reiterates here that, that the staff will also, and they're clear that they will escalate those sorts of substantive issues to the city manager as well.
Christine, I have a question. So I was working with Walter in some PowerPoint presentation for, you know, for the meeting with some of the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And you know, as you work together, you know, like, I did a presentation, I realized that a QR code for like the C-click Fix is working, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
So my understanding is like, I'm working with him, and he will work on whatever needs to be done.
That's a great, like, area of like gray and nuance. So the way I would respond to that is if there's a request for Walter to, or any staff, my office or anybody else is to say, hey, could somebody on your team work on some of the content from my slides for the neighborhood meetings? Which is something we do for all of you. That request should include the city manager on a CC, right, if it's coming through email, so I know. And that, because it might not be Walter. It might be like, oh, Walter's really busy with this other thing, and we're going to have Priya help you with that, right? So we establish that the staff's going to work on a thing with you and for you. The back and forth part, it is a little gray, I would say. Like, if it's like, oh, hey, the C-click Fix link isn't working, that, that's like, that fits in the category in my mind of like, you're any other resident where you're, you're trying to have that level of interaction. But if you're going back and forth on content on the slides, and it's going to require him to do more work and analysis, I think having that visibility, having like his direct supervisor, it may not need to be me in that situation, but you know, Walter directly reports to Priya right now. But, and to have an assistant city manager on there so that they're just aware, because they might want to jump in and help or have somebody else come in to the conversation. So does that help? And it's a little bit gray, but does that clarify enough?
Something for Walter, and I think somebody said, you, well, we, like, I was going to do the presentation, but they said, oh, no, Walter's going to help you. So, and it's more like the follow-up, you know, when, especially when it's like maybe a different department. So, and it's more like the follow-up, um, you know, when, especially when it's like maybe a different department. I don't know who has a website, but, uh, but yeah, I, I think so. I'm just going to make sure, you know, when to know, not to go into the rabbit hole. You know that.
Yeah, it's just use your personal best judgment and thinking about, oh, if I'm, if, if what you're asking of him to do is going to create more time and work, that's, I think, when to include.
And I'm very aware of that, of that, in fact, I ended up adding more and then I sent him what I had done. But I would just, yeah.
That's a great example.
I think the other thing, Christine, is obviously once this is kind of, it's sitting at ninety-five percent, Christine will share it with the executive team and her ACMs. And then it may be that in that conversation, like Angelo or Priya saying, great, we can drop Christine from this. I've got you. I mean, there can, staff can help manage that too, of what is the right level of visibility to, based on when they understand.
And we can provide that clarification upfront. Like, if you're ever not clear, just say, hey, as I go back and forth with Walter, who should I make sure I'm including in this, just so we're all on the same page?
Yeah. And then we talked about this later, but based, because you brought it up now. I, I think one thing we might want to consider is any requests for help on presentations, we just put it through council CRM is the best way to do it. Because, well, just for the forty-five slide presentation that I'm giving this afternoon, I mean, just having it so that way it gets triaged appropriately. And it's the same thing for that one, I mean, we all have them, but I was just, I, I, I think if all of us just send it through council CRM and then it'll sort out, and then we've already had a discussion about how the back and forth. But.
That's a great suggestion. I think in this case, we were just talking about.
Yeah, no, no, I, I want to, I want to. Forward, it's something that I wanted to bring up later because I always do my own slides and it's just, I feel like it's not working in the, the best way possible. So I think if I go through council CRM, we'll actually get the flow better.
And then it's tracked and we can make sure that.
Hundred percent.
Sometimes it's like we got to pull some information from different departments and so we're kind of hurting.
That's why the council CRM is good.
Okay. Yeah, okay, great. Direction and work assignments and priorities. This is again, a little bit more of elaboration. It speaks to some of the stuff that Kathy spoke to earlier. Organizational culture, this is just a statement that the city manager will foster a culture that's responsive, transparent, um, and professional judgment by the leadership team essentially to encourage responsive, timely communications back to the mayor and council. Um, this is a new section under working hours and communication channels. So, and I added a clarification, um, there was some good feedback on this just to clarify the difference between email and texts in particular. So the intention of this section, and it's worth a pause to say, I was talking to Kathy about this when we were preparing. The city management profession in general is struggling to, uh, encourage the next generation of folks to be city managers because of how much twenty-four, seven, kind of eighty-hour-a-week kind of job it can be. And we've talked a lot, and I've appreciated very much this council's support that work-life balance is an important thing, not, you know, for everybody, including the manager. So, and, and we recognize that what we do in serving the community is a twenty-four, seven job. I mean, that's, you know, when there's emergencies or crisis in the community, you know, we're on. And that's a, an expectation that this doesn't counter that, I guess, to put it differently. So regular business hours, eight thirty to five, text anytime you want, anytime you need something. If it's after hours, my preference, and here what we're saying here is email, you can email anytime, email me at two o'clock in the morning. The expectation for myself as well as the staff is that they will respond as soon as they can, you know, within a reasonable business day or so, depending upon like the, the time sensitivity of the, of email, but back into the regular business hours section. So that's, so that's the, the council members are encouraged to send emails at any time, understanding that staff will respond during regular business hours. Any clarifications or questions?
I think it's like, that is also my expectation. Sometimes I email and I say, for Monday, you know, because I want to make sure that if I send an email, you're not going to respond.
I just, I'm going to show up on Monday.
Delivery is helpful.
Well, that was good.
And I will just say that, like, this council in particular, I think, is very, very respectful of these boundaries. And I feel very, very lucky. I know a lot of my colleagues don't, you know, when I tell them, like, oh, the council members have texted me all weekend. I said, it doesn't have to be that way. You have a, that there are councils that will really support this. I think it's really wise for you also for the future, you know? If I, if this, if at some point, and you will, I will retire someday, that a council needs to hire another city manager and they see this in this document, they're going to want to work here because they'll feel respected and that their life will be, you know, honored as well. You know, their outside work-life is honored as well. So I, I just wanted to take a moment and appreciate this.
I just wanted to say, during my professional, when I was working, one of the things, when, when we talked about flexibility, it wasn't, my flexibility a lot of times was after hours because I was using daytime hours when the kids were little, be it kids' things. And that was really important to me and I had that flexibility to do that. But that also meant that I, I personally chose to do work from seven to ten or whatever. And I would send emails out to people. So, and I would just say, hey, I am working during these hours. It's not that I'm working those hours and these hours. It's, so that flexibility piece, I think, becomes part of the individual and their, and their particular. So I mean, I, I don't, when you time bound it, it may or may not work for people. And when you talk about work-life balance, that, that eight thirty to five may be work for some.
So I want to clarify, it's not about hours of work. I work, the same thing, I have, young, still, I'll work in the evening because, you know, and I, we enjoy that flexibility. This is only to talk about text communications outside of eight thirty to five, not about like, you know, there's no way you could do this job and not work in the nights and the weekends at times.
Right.
So, yes, Councilor Mapplehill.
So I think this is getting into the weeds of the protocol for setting expectations on responsiveness. But one thing that I, that I have appreciated, especially in using the council CRM system, is that there's usually, and there's no service level agreement or memorandum of understanding that codifies what we're about to say, which is that usually within twenty-four hours, there is a response to say, received, I'll need X weeks to get back for more complicated analyses. Or sometimes it'll say, it's indefinite for the moment, but I'll get back to you. So what I, what I've liked about that, and I don't know that we have to codify every single scenario there because it could be different, but I liked the notion that there is a, um, I'm not going to get back to you in twenty-four hours, but I do want to make certain that there is a sense of one at a time.
Yeah.
And that allows, I think, to set expectations between our ears, but also with whatever dependencies might be extra.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know, again, I don't think we have to codify, but I do want to make certain that there's, I think the, the two-way on that is to be able to have, enhance some sort of expectation.
Yeah, there may be a way to just kind of say that responsive means acknowledgement of the message and some follow-up, you know, just again, for the purposes of continuing the system. So I made a note of that, that would be a minor clarification. Let's see, the next section that has some edits to it, and these are minor, again, a clarification. Labor groups are going to want to meet with you. The additional text on the bottom says, for substantive issues that require additional city staff and are outside elected officials, it will be the mayor and, as appropriate, the city manager will service the city's representative for these meetings. During periods of actively negotiated negotiations, city council members agree to refrain from meeting with labor groups to maintain the integrity of the negotiation process and ensure consistency in communication. So try to draw a boundary there that says, meet anytime. And the, the labor unions know this as well. I mean, they're generally used to this. You, you, um, it puts the labor negotiation team, it's kind of like there's two, two negotiation tables happening simultaneously and it can really create confusion and degrade kind of the, the process. So everybody's kind of shaking their heads. I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with us drawing that line in the sand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one thing we did in Nevada on this is, you know, you'll meet pre, sitting at the table to figure out your strategy. And during that time, we said, come, if you want to, you want to meet with labor, you can, because you're understanding what the issues are. But then there was a certain point where the manager's office would say, okay, now we're in active strategy and we're starting to meet, so we're, you know, we need you to cut off communication. So, and from that point then, when you really actively, then it was, and sometimes, so that's, there was like this pre and then there was, everyone got clarity in where the line was and then you're in active negotiations.
Okay. Uh, next section, coordination of communication with the public. This is similar to the clarification on communication back and forth with the staff. So CC the city manager on all substantive written communications. Um, for the purposes of this protocol, substantive includes emails that go beyond routine acknowledgements or factual responses. Typically involve policy questions, operational issues, community requests that may require staff follow-up or matters that could influence city priorities, resources or workload. So examples of a substantive communication replies to a community member that commit, should be commits, uh, the city to exploring or addressing an issue in a particular way or communications that highlight potential changes in city operations, programs or services. Non-substantive communications would be things like acknowledging receipt of an email, thanking a community member for their input, providing or leaking to public, publicly available information, offering factual explanations to clarify existing policies, procedures or decisions, or responding to community complaints with general information or directing them to C Click Fix. I'm going to go back to this bullet that speaks to offering factual explanations to clarify existing policies, procedures or decisions, probably should say, or, uh, programs. The mayor and I were having this conversation about this document. And for example, there are policy issues that are controversial homelessness, for example. And there may be complaints, concerns or questions that come in, let's just say about the Anderson encampment. Like, that's, that's not an uncommon communication that might come to any one of you. And so we've developed some content that responds to concerns that are repetitive concerns. So what that bullet is kind of meant to refer to, I'm just illustrating that, you know, if you've got a, if you've got some content already prepared that's very responsive to that email and you want to just send that back to that community member, you don't need to CC me on that. That's, you know, again, just factual information. If there becomes an engagement and a discussion back and forth over email, that's where it gets a little gray, where if it goes back to those substantive things, like, oh, this might require some staff time or it gets beyond, gets a little bit into the weeds on subject matter, like, that would be the point to kind of include city manager and assistant city manager so that they, they might be able to take it from there and then circle back when the issue is resolved with the community member and the council member.
Over the last, I'd say, year, maybe longer, we've been using aliases for a number of different projects and programs and including that, but we don't necessarily know who's behind that alias. And so, so like the end homelessness.
Oh.
Da, 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 who's receiving it at the end? And so is it, would it be more appropriate to add that email plus? Or am I already understood who's behind that alias? Again, it's a, it's a, it's a, we don't need to go through.
Yeah.
Because, but we have also all like Northgate, right? Northgate has, we have a number of aliases, but, and I'm assuming all the right people are behind the scene and I don't need to CC everybody else unless I want to make sure there's visibility that I've CC'd somebody else. But I don't know necessarily who's receiving it.
Yeah, so I want to make sure I'm responding to your question. If, so you're saying if you get a, an email from a community member asking questions.
And I want it on the record, I want it, and so I'm going to include the Northgate alias.
Let's, can we just take?
No, you can't.
A homeless.
Sort of alias, because it's a, it's an email address that goes to the appropriate team, is what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's generic.
It's a weird.
It's generic.
Group email.
Group email.
It's a group email.
There we go, group email. So, let's just take the end homelessness.
I'm sorry, I'm actually a public here for clarification. It's unclear what's referenced by the terms, so could you?
Sure, so end homelessness, there's an email address that we refer members of the public in the community to, to send concerns, complaints, any inquiry about homelessness. And the email address is endhomelessness@citycrfl.org. So does that respond to your question, Ron? So that, what, what happens to that is that email goes to the community services division. That would be Daniel Cooperman, Anuin, they receive those emails. The whole city manager's office has access to that inbox, but there, but two people monitor that inbox.
Got it.
So in your example, if there's substantive communication going back and forth between a community member and yourself, based on this protocol, copying andhomelessness.org is great. I would also copy the city manager on those communications. It does, because that, I'm not.
I made the assumption you already were getting it, so that's helpful. So that's really helpful to know who's getting it behind the scene, who's part of that, what did you, from did you use group?
Distributionless.
Distribution, whatever, yeah. Yeah.
So to further that though, because there's sometimes, like when we put on the phone or Anderson, there's a lot of traffic. I, isn't this part of the managing up that that team would then let you know or let John know, whoever, or it'd be Northgate, because we have those group triage ones. I think there's one now around housing, there's one around public works, so there's more than one. Isn't that part of the managing up? Because when I do it, I assume two things. One is, they know what to do with it.
Right.
And they're going to get in the conversation as appropriate and it's part of the public record. That's the other part that's really key, because I really want the public record, because the community doesn't know. They're just emailing me, but I really want to make sure it's part of the public records on that topic, whatever that topic is. So to me, I, I will just say, if you're added or Angela's added, you have just exploded your inbox just from my emails alone, like on end homelessness, by probably forty emails a day. So what you're getting, you're getting two hundred more emails that's just going to ch, 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 versus end homelessness. It's triaging and they're like, oh, this individual's already emailed us directly. So sometimes what I'll hear is, oh, we've already communicated with that individual by phone, by this, by that. So then I'm like, we're, we're good, the connection is there.
Yep. Yes, tricky about it is if it's just a one-way and back, like, hey, I need this information and there's a response, that fits in the non-substantive. But sometimes what happens, and, and I don't know, maybe if you can help me with this, Kathy, if, if there is a back and forth that turns into a dialogue that expands the scope of just a, a one, you know, a quick one and back, that's when sometimes it can be difficult. Yes, of course, the staff are going to manage up, but real time, when stuff is going back and forth, sometimes there's context that Daniel may not have to, like, the situation that's going back and forth. I'm talking about not just factual information going back and forth. Can you help with the nuance of this and why this is tricky?
I think it's tricky because, well, these things do, they start here and then they morph a little bit, right? Things grow, but if, if you all, I mean, you all have the ability to say, okay, this is growing to be a bigger thing. I need to let Christine know, then you can start to copy her on an email. She might not be copied on the first couple, she may be copying the second. And, and to go to your point, Mayor Collin, it is staff's responsibility to manage up and have their political studentess and just understanding policy and issues to know when to either ping it up to an ACM or ping it up to Christine. So this, this take, you're building muscles. You're really like building practice and muscles that will get easier the more you get, the more you do it.
I disagree. Um, it completely defeats the purpose of having one spot for these topical things to go to and have an expert at the other end of that, of that email address to evaluate. Oh, my goodness, this is a Christine issue, I've got to go talk to Christine. Oh, my goodness, this is a routine thing, I can send. I, yeah, I think if we're going to have, if we're going to have topical emails, we have to use them. And just, that's it, that's it. And the responsibility is on the recipient to do the, the correct level of decision-making. Because this, we might as well not have one that's like, oh, well, this, uh, topic A has really bled over into topic B, so now I'm going to start copying the whole, um, this other thing. So we've got to decide what we're going to do. If we're going to have a topical email address, then we need to use it exclusively and depend on the people on the other side to appropriately prioritize what's coming in or not. You know, it's kind of one way or the other.
Well, I think it intersects really nicely with council CRM, because we only have a few of these topical emails and there tend to be on the ones that are, that there's a lot of community interest. So maybe it's between that and council CRM.
Maybe it's both. Did that part of the visibility, guys, is that, no, let me clarify what I meant by that. If, if it's endhomelessness.org, or, or, you know, if it's the email and homelessness and you copy council CRM, then part of what happens then is the assistant city managers are always looking at the totality of that stuff. It doesn't have to, it, the concern that I have, and I understand, like, I think this is a really important conversation about like these, they're not aliases, whatever we're calling. Topical emails. Is, I think we maybe need to do some clarification about what the purpose of those are.
Yeah.
And when to use them and when not to use them. Because I think that we might be getting like lost in the nuance piece and I think it's a really important question. I think, like you said, well, I want it to be on the record. Well, any email you sell, send is on the record, it doesn't have to go to a topical email, so.
Right, but, but I want.
Right, but, but I want staff, I mean, we're receiving a lot of emails around certain subjects right now, and I want staff to also have that input. They need to have the input, it can't just stop with my inbox and.
Of course.
So, and, and I don't want to switch it off of the homelessness, because another one might be, just again for the group, I think there's, I don't know if there's topical one about public works, for example. But so for us, the choice is either see clicks fix, so someone's like, oh, I'm worried about the pothole, we email them back, use see click fix, don't go through us, because we all use see click fix. But it's the same kind of thing, and I find think unless there's, sometimes I'll see on the public works dot whatever, that one, so. It's the same type of thing, like who's getting it, and I would never include you guys on that either.
Never want that.
Oh, you love them.
There, there, but I do think the use of topical, I think clarifying, I do think they're really great for the.
I do too.
Whatever those kinds of broad subjects that we're going to be grappling with, I think is really important, I think there was one on, was there one on Northgate for a while?
Yeah, so I think all the major projects have their own topical email.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
Right, I, I, I think you need to get clear on what you want there, because I think what this is revealing, i- i- if you think there's, could possibly be a circumstance where it's topical plus CRM. Then wow, we need to come up with some better rules for what goes where, because doubling up on that is, that's craziness. Um, that then you're going to have, you know, you know, you've got two.
Directing on the inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's a really good point, um, I, I think.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, I, it's also, I think it depends what the situation is about, right? So because you have, like, for instance, we're talking about Anderson Drive, like, oh, bike lane is blocked, bike lane is blocked. So you know, that's not urgent, it's just annoying, but it's not urgent. But then I'm driving and I notice in this intersection, wow, somebody just ran the stop, you know, the stoplight and something almost happened. On that case, you know, it's more like. I want to make sure, yeah, maybe it is actually uh, council CRM, but making sure that I'm copying also Christine, you know, something that I see or I even. You know, like.
In your example, you see someone red, run a red.
Well, like, I'm honest, yeah, because I, well, because I realized that um, we need to change the lighting.
Uh, we need to.
Council CRM.
Yeah, but in, I think in a situation where I almost witnessed like a big crash, maybe it becomes more urgent where I'm like, it's council CRM, but also like. I want to make sure.
You're right, so this is a good example, because you're saying that's now a priority for you, that you're trying to communicate Christine, that should be important, but like on traffic, I think that's a great example. There's the traffic engineering topical email, guys knew that. So council CRM and maybe you CC the traffic people, because again, we want the right people to be doing it, so now Christine or Angela are hearing that. Worried about the stop sign, but they're not, they're not the ones making it, ultimately comes to TPW or comes to the traffic people.
Yeah, and if it's something that I feel uh, it, it can potentially be dangerous, um, it could also be police, you know, so the. From my end is like, I'm not making the decision who needs to be involved with this, that's why I usually will copy Christine. Because, or, you know, or uh, city management, because I feel that in that case. Then I am better to figure out who should be involved.
Okay, and so now I see, because you guys know your district really well, I see the four of you emailing us all the time, like I'm just, is that, and maybe that's the best way to do it? I don't know, I'm just trying to hear like how we.
I can.
The most effective in a good way.
I can think of the entire year that probably I have done that once, because I was like, wow, I mean. It was, we almost, it was almost like a big accident on, you know.
I'm sorry, like a really, because it, I mean, let's just say that we'd never had this twenty minute conversation. It was very clear to me, so here, here's an example.
Yeah.
We adopted uh, through staff analysis on downtown, an ETNS study, an engineering and traffic study. That allowed us to uh, take advantage of an assembly bill that allowed us to regulate the speed of our downtown area to twenty miles an hour along fourth, fifth, fourth, fifth and Mission. There was a edge case where, not an edge case, but we had set the expectation there would be a phase two to look at other parts of the city, and on the city website. It explained it, but there was a nuance that I picked up at a, at a meeting with the community. And I said, hey, council CRM, can you provide clarification on timing and expectations? And I was able to take that information and then make that response, that was a very clear example to me of how we use council CRM. When it comes to these purpose ones, that my understanding, and I think it's still the case, that those are ones when, hey, if there is a, an inbound. Question that is related to one of those, say it's the Northgate topic or the homelessness topic. We usually, I will usually employ that to respond to the community and say, hey, these are great questions, I have added in. Staff through this mechanism and they will respond on the, on the facts, because that is, that is how those are supposed to be meant. I don't usually, I wouldn't use it to get attention from staff, it's, it's meant to assist in making certain we get timely factual information, so we're not playing. Telephone on those topics, because those are very big topics that have dedicated staff to it, that's my understanding.
Yep. I think we're just making this way more complicated than it needs to be.
That's why twenty minutes was a little.
With twenty minutes, this is ridiculous, CRM, your default should be to use, to use CRM. That gets it to all the right people, you don't have to think, CRM, love it. CRM and it will get to the right people and all copies will, will be made, that's what we should be using. Absent additional information, like for example, if it's a, a detail on, on, on Northgate and you know. Who is the person who knows the, the particular detail that you want? But, and it's a, just an administrative detail, that's fine, so are we agreed, CRM is our default mode, mode of communication? Done.
And using topical, in the top, in conjunction with the topical.
I, I would say no, the topical, the, the topical ones are, we might refer people to that, but our, if I'm going to write a, if. A communication to staff, I'm going to use CRM and let that figure out where it should go. And that's just our default, just period.
Isn't that the purpose of having like a distribution, like a distribution list for a specific topic?
No, let me back up, I think the, the purpose of the distribution list, like endhomelessness.org is primarily as an intake. For the community to get access, direct access to this, so they can kind of like pull it in and look, figure out what they're going to do.
We're saying that, I know, I think, I think the point of confusion though is that, that the tracking and responsiveness. It is, that, that, that endhomelessness.org isn't designed for that, what I mean by that, again, if it's a one way communication. I need an answer to this, when is, you know, is camping banned on Anderson or not, yes or no? That's, that's fine, but when it, where, what it can turn into is. That communication can turn into questions about policy, it can turn into questions about program stuff, that's the concern that I have about visibility. So if it all goes to council CRM, then the triage system that we have through council CRM will say, will ping and say, oh, this one is really a. Good, there's a policy, that's where the managing up happens centrally and everyone has access to council CRM. But right now it's a little bit bifurcated, I think that's what's being revealed in the conversation, that maybe I didn't even realize until we got into the conversation, that. Some assumptions were being made about how these emails were being used, it's still a good intake for the community, so the community doesn't have to know Daniel's name, right? It just goes.
We are using it that way, I don't, so maybe we're just spending so much time, and we are using it as one way, I think we're adding it so for awareness. So if a, if it was, if a resident is emailing all five of us the exact same one, we're all using end homelessness, they know. We're not, and that way staff can answer or do whatever, I think we're saying the same thing, we're not all putting the five through council CRM when it's a. They're giving input on something and maybe they have some clarifying questions, we're just forwarding it to end homelessness.
I'm going to recommend that we pause this conversation, because I think there's been some good questions raised, and I think what needs, within this document and maybe even for the public. To go to your point, by some reason, like what is the, when do you use see click fix, when do you use the CRM, when do you use the topical?
Only, only we use CRM.
Right, so but for, and there's the public use and then there's council use. But, and then there's staff has to understand the expectations, so there's a little bit of a matrix, I think, that needs to be put together on this. And frankly, for the community, it would be helpful for them to understand, we all created these, what I call, these generic email boxes fifteen years ago. As a way, the, the public didn't have to figure out that Joe Smith ran this thing, you know, and that we had redundancy. Um, but it can get confusing, so a little, I think there's a matrix that, but staff needs to do some work on this and bring it back to you in the final document.
Yeah, I think the, I totally agree with that, I don't, I don't think this will be hard to solve, we just have to figure out what problems we're trying to solve, what does the community use, what does the council use, and what circumstances, and a matrix will solve the whole.
And you were starting to get at it with the substantives, so you.
Yeah, and that's the nuances.
You didn't know that you opened up the Pandora's box.
Yeah, one big thing and let's move on, and for the distribution list, um, do you have like a one pager with all the each email address and the topic?
We will, we'll add it, it'll be part of the matrix, because you'll have to say like, you know, there'll be some if then, okay.
You're defeating your purpose, but okay.
Well, it's just on the email with all the topics.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on, we're moving on, moving on. Next section, okay, so let me get to the right page here, coordination of the public. Uh, council member conduct toward staff. Um, this section was added more for the future, and I have to say to all of you, this is just a reminder to all of us, this is not solving a problem that we currently have. When we recruit for director level positions and. I feel so proud to be able to say that our council is respectful and professional and in public meetings as well as, you know, in general, that not only respectful, but. Is um, acknowledges and recognizes staff every single council meeting, um, our staff get accolades from, from all of you, which is remarkable, I'll just let Cathy. Reinforce that, so we really want to preserve that part of the culture and how we operate, feedback is super important. It's really just about how we deliver the feedback and time and place, and so we wanted to kind of codify this as a way of, again, highlighting. How special we are here in San Rafael and um, how, it's just how important it is to keep that. Cause you're going to continue to have really, really great people work here, so long as that's the culture, when that devolves in other jurisdictions. Which, you know, not to name anybody, but it, it can get really, really ugly and people, you know, the best and the brightest will leave because they. They want to be treated with um, with respect, so.
And I just, I mean, with Christine, what I hear is that, I mean, you've built a culture in how you work as a council, how you work in the community, in that council dais and with the. And that's not always true, um, so, and that council, that culture matching your staff culture. Does affect what you can attract and retain, because in this business, it's a small world. Uh, and people know when there are dysfunctional councils and they leave or don't come.
I had a definition question on this section, just above where you are right now, under where it says in meeting with public settings. What is the definition in this context of presiding officer?
Can you? Help me exactly where you are.
Yes, uh, in, under, in meetings in public settings, it's the second bullet beneath that says direct questions through the president of officer.
It really should be the mayor. It um, it's meant whoever's running the meeting, so like if the vice mayor was running the meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood presiding officer, so it is really just who's.
You did that already, because we're in meetings, you'll say, hey.
No, no, I know, I just wanted to make sure that it's.
It threw me, yeah, you already do that. Yeah, no, you already do that, you guys sort of do that, yeah. So thank you again, any comments, questions, or edits on that section? Community written inquiries, I think.
Well, I think, oh, hold on, just one more thing, so on that, I just wanted to, to include what we typically do, which is. We're allowed, of course, to address the presenter, which is not either the presiding officer, it says in meetings, just to make sure, because we. We're not restricting how we. Engage in the meetings.
But you say, sort of like on the dais, you'll say, I have additional questions, and then you just ask them, you're not, you're not just interrupting, saying.
I know, and, but I'm, what, what's written is, it's not what we're doing, I just want to make sure we're not like.
I think the goal of this, let me see if this solves it, direct questions.
I think it's a maintaining order type of thing, in a way that appeared as parliamentary, parliamentary procedure thing.
I didn't know it was a presiding officer though.
You're not, yes.
Presiding officers.
For sure.
To staff.
I got the devil.
I got the devil.
Yeah, you know, and back in the day, the mayor just uses this all the time on every single agenda item, and I just use it at the end, because it ends up being really a lot of banging.
Wow, but it's nice to have it handy, it's just.
It is nice to have it handy.
So council member hell, I just made some edits on the screen, the, the intent of this section really is like. To remain not, not to be adversarial in your questioning of staff, that's the point of that bullet, so I think it's a little, it was a little bit noise, like. Through the presiding officer or mayor, so I just simplified the sentence.
Yeah, I think that makes, yeah, I just didn't want it to preclude what we typically do, in the spirit of what we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to recommend that we skip the next two, because the CRM and the topical emails and everything, I think will get solved and we'll just kind of do a. Refresh on that section.
That's fine, I would actually, I would propose that you remove the email from this public document and we have, the public, it would be confusing. If I was a public, I'd be like, oh, I'm going to use this, and then we just opened up a whole other platform. It's an in.
Oh, it's in here.
It's an internal email only.
This was a carryover from the last document, I can't believe I didn't catch that.
Yeah, that would create confusion.
For sure.
Okay, I think it changed, and it could change.
Yeah. Okay, emerging priorities and our policy initiatives, this is super basic, but it's meant to refer to what we're going to talk about as a next agenda item. So um, and we'll have a document that guides for that too coming forward to council, so it doesn't need to be in both places.
And just to complete the final sentence in that bullet of emerging priorities, because it, it speaks to the, of course, to the scenario of just reach out to the mayor, but if there is a brown egg violation, I think the implied. Alternative is just reach out directly to the city manager.
I'm sorry, say that I.
So in other words, the completion of that idea is the if not.
Ah.
Is, is just to reach out to the city manager. It's silent on that, I think it's implied.
Yeah. Thank you, it's a good uh, clarification. Okay, participation on non city boards, there was a question about this, this might need some clarification. Um, as elected officials for the city, the priority is to serve the CRFL community, therefore, participation on outside boards is discouraged. I want, uh, there were some questions on this about like, well, what is an outside board and what is my service as a, a CRFL council member versus not? So I was going to um, hope Mayor Kate, you could offer some clarification about, about that, so we're like. Like, I think one of the questions came up is like, well, is serving on MCC MC part of San Rafael?
I think an outside board is one that's not designated through the San Rafael committee, whatever the other document, the um. Thank you, appointments, appointments list.
Is this really speaking to nonprofits?
I think it's speaking to nonprofits, advocacy groups, so maybe someone um, on the council has a strong advocacy position and they want to be on that board. So I think it's, I think we're trying to um, remove any conflict of interest or perceived activism or advocacy from the dais, so. This must come up in other cities.
It does, it does, I had a council member that sat on a homelessness nonprofit in Sonoma and. Especially now with some of the piece that Rob will go through with you, with some of the kind of fundraising restrictions, et cetera, it, it was, even if that council member stepped down. It causes confusion in the public of what hat are you wearing, because you're always wearing your council member hat, people don't necessarily know you're wearing your board member hat. So I think that's what I see, and this, uh, this feels like really good best practice to do, um, so.
So I added. I added a clarification that said those that are not identified on the city's CRFL's council appointments resolution. So that covers more transit, that covers, just want to make sure it's, it's inclusive of, covers JPAs. Covered MCC MC.
Would you want to see nonprofits specifically on this, like a future council member gets elected and they've been on a nonprofit that has received money? Or at points works with the city, would you want to be really clear that before they come to running for council, they know they're going to have to step down from that board based on this policy?
Um, I, I have a question, because um. I'm just thinking, is this a recommendation or is this legally? Because I can think of. You know, organizations where, you know, if they ask me, I might want to be on the board. Um, and maybe, but when you are on that board and there is a decision or something specifically for San Rafael, I would excuse myself, so um.
You know, that's a great question, so maybe it's a way to protect all of us from saying yes all the time, I get asked to be on nonprofit boards all the time.
I'd ask the floor and ask you to put this in.
I mean, I've probably been asked to sit on a dozen boards, and so I'm able to say, well, you know, it's discouraged, I don't know, the legal question, Rob would have to answer that, but I actually think it's a protection for you all. So you can have additional life, but it's a way to, to say no, but I, I don't know.
Yeah.
To respond to.
Yeah.
So the legal issue is incompatible, it's evident, it typically arises with. Not with respect to nonprofits such, but rather with respect to.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm concerned that people might not be able to hear you online.
Should be.
Um, where would, where, I was having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Use your outside voice.
Legal is.
Used to go in meetings at six o'clock.
Legal issue.
The legal issue is incompatible offices, so that's, if you look it up in the Minnesota law handbook, that's where it would be. In terms of, uh, uh, being on nonprofit boards and such, there's no legal prescription. I think Mayor Kate has identified a reason why one might consider declining. Uh, I'm also aware, because I'm so familiar with what you all do and the demands of being council members, that, um, there's so much that you're doing as council members already, that, uh, much which is in the public eye, much of which is not. And so people might think, oh, there's just something else you can do, cause you're a nice person and you're interested in something. They don't know that, oh my God, I'm reading tons of stuff, I'm going to so many different committee meetings already in my role as a council member. So, I, I would agree, the idea of this is intended to say, we're really, I'm trying to avoid doing things like that to make sure that we have the space to be council members. In terms of, um, the legal issue that I'm gonna get to later, if you want me to, it's included as an attachment or it's in this document. And that's simply with regard to FPPC reporting for advocacy with regard to fundraising. I hope that answers your question, and I hope I was loud enough.
And is that, um, so what you're describing, is it also like conflict of interest? Or is independently, if that there is a conflict of interest? And I'm thinking, I'm just going to give you an example, which, um, which I'm not considering, right? But like, I just did the Marine Master Gardeners, and they are looking for board members, right? Like if I were to join the board for Marine Master Gardeners, for example, it's, it's a kind of like, I, it's not something I wish to do, but I'm just saying it could be a possibility, and I'm just giving you like a small.
I mean, it's no secret, because, uh, this, uh, person is a dear friend of ours, is a member of a board that I sit on, which is the, uh, Board of Cedars of Marin, where my daughter lives in Ross, and is also a county supervisor, and that's Brian Colbert. And, and he joined Cedars before he became a supervisor, and I don't think it ever comes up as a conflict for him. Uh, certainly, I'm not aware of it, but if Marine Master Gardeners was coming before the city of San Rafael with some sort of grant request or something like that, then the issue would be kind of obvious to a person who was a member of that nonprofit, that they should, you know, qualify themselves for participating.
Right, so I think that, yeah, my point that if there was a topic related specifically to the city of San Rafael, you could excuse, excuse yourself from making any decisions or from, obviously not even attending to a city council meeting representing that.
Right, I mean, I could give more advice on that, and I don't mean to pick on Supervisor Colbert, I just happen to know that he sits on this nonprofit with me. But, uh, I suppose if some grant proposal were to come to the county, he would step out of it, I know he would.
Right, and, and he's, so, back to my point, it is discouraged, but it's not mandatory.
It's, I, it's, there's no legal prescription, in other words, there's nothing in the law that says you can't do it. I think as Mayor Kate was alluding to, uh, again, for members of the public or people that might invite you to do things that aren't familiar with the level of burden that your council, uh, duties, uh, put on you. If you wish, you could point to this and say, gee, we as a body have adopted a guiding principle that discourages us from engaging in activities like this, because we as a body wanna make sure that we all have sufficient time to engage with our city work, because it requires so much of us. So you could use that tool if you wanted to, or if it really meant a lot to you to participate in the thing, there'd be nothing legally that would prohibit you from. Does that help?
Yeah, and I'm thinking, a, as we are doing this document for the future, like whoever is coming, that they understand that, you know, that it's encouraged, but it's not legally.
Well, I, I don't think there's anything there that says it's prohibited, we can, I can look at it again with Christine and, and we'll bring it back.
I put a note here to ask you to provide some language around, it's not illegal in a little context, I think, for the future, I think would also be helpful.
Super.
It might also be.
Yep, thank, thank you.
It might also be helpful, but if you're approached and you're thinking about joining a board, that you have a conversation with the manager ahead of time. Because once, once, I've had this happen, once a council member says yes, and then you're like, oh, this is gonna be really messy, because manager has context of what's coming, and that council member's just trying to be, you know, do good things for the community. But sometimes the answer is, you really should do this for another year.
I put, our consultant city manager and our city attorney, so there's plenty of activity there. So, great, great conversation. The next section is also new, uh, similar, policy advocacy by council members. I added in, in this section, um, that on January twentieth, twenty fifteen, the council adopted a resolution which established a formal legislative platform and specifically procedure for the city to support or oppose legislation, and then framed that advocacy in the scope of city services, such as local control, city finances, emergency preparedness, commits the city to respond only to legislation that directly impacts those service areas. So there was some clarification in that resolution, I think it's a good point of reference as to what this section is about. The, kind of, what council members may do and, um, express persons, I'm just gonna highlight it real quick, publicly express personal views on local, state, national or international issues, including issues of foreign policy, municipal policy or contested community topics, provided the advocacy is clearly identified as the council member's personal viewpoint and not as official position of the city or city staff. Probably should say or of the city council.
So can I clarify one thing here, Christine? So just for example, though, for everyone's knowledge, if, if you are going to do this, is a council member, like a council member Hill wants to, is that, is he just doing that as he is a person with no title, or is he doing that as council member Hill?
Well, since you used me as an example, can I? So here would be an example, and it's a very simple one that happens very commonly, and, and we can move more towards the gray. But let's say, our election season, I support, um, assembly member so and so. Uh, I would never email it from my city email address, I would email it from my personal. I can still identify, I still identify myself as holding office, but I, I never say, and on behalf of the city, I do this. So that's a, that's an example of being inside the boundaries.
It is, that is exactly, that is exactly it. I just wanna, because sometimes people are confused on what that means, does that mean I can, I can't say that I'm a sitting council member? No, you can, but you're not doing on city letterhead, you're not using your city email, that is, that is the exact right way.
Thank you for using me as an example.
Yeah, no, appreciate like.
So I, I just added, that council member as an individual, just, does that qualify or help a little bit?
I think we got it, pretty clear.
On the resolution third, one three eight seven zero, um, that was twenty fifteen, and they control the issues, the city finances, emergency preparedness. We've talked a lot about it throughout the dais around immigration issues, um, and that, I'm wondering if we, how, I wanna either include that or don't include any.
It says such as.
I know, right, yeah.
I would probably not include, I wouldn't try to do a laundry list, so maybe it's just functional areas of city services. Commits the city and just remove that whole section.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, cause it could change, and these days, it's changing.
I mean, you can refer to the resolution.
I, I would do that, I would just, I think, yeah.
Okay. You know.
So on, uh, what council members may do, we had comments from member of the staff about what are any sort of expectations about having city council members respond, and I'm wondering if part of it is to either respond directly or have staff respond, um, so the opportunity for input is always there. So I'm just kind of curious of what expectations are, a, again, I don't think we have to.
Sorry, can you clarify?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't totally checking it. Okay, so when, you know, residents email us, I mean, I try to respond every email within forty-eight hours unless something's going on, right? And I either respond directly or I'll forward it to staff through all the things we already told them.
We're gonna figure it out, yeah.
And, and staff will respond, so that way there's a response to the resident.
Sure, so the question is.
Well, cause we have public comment that someone was.
The timelines about.
Yeah, about responsiveness from the city, like to me, hearing from city staff is, uh, a great representative of the council member as well. Like you could, yeah, either can respond, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, what I was confused about is how does that fit into this policy advocacy dimension or it doesn't?
It was brought up here, like, and I was actually thinking, there was a member, and this is another perfect example, I'll use my, there was a member of the public who literally called and left like twenty-five messages over four days. And so, fine, I sent them to the city staff to, to respond back to.
Yeah.
Cause that's an extreme, but, so I just wanna make sure that we have that somewhere, that, that council members have and the mayor has an ability to have staff respond on their behalf.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I understand now, yes.
Well, and just responding to what we just heard of public comment. So, and I don't know if there's a timeline or whatever, I don't even wanna get into that, cause life gets crazy, you know, I'm careful about constraining future. But I just having clarity that that is a council member, is, and the mayor is totally under our prerogative to have the response not come from us, but come from the city. I don't know where that goes, but.
Kate, are you referencing what I see as C right there? So why are you bringing up that?
I'm bringing it up because the public comment talked about this section, I actually don't care where it goes in there, but I just think it's important to have it in there.
Okay, agreed, and, and I'm looking at C, and I do have a concern about, about potential inference that could arise.
Actually, it shouldn't, the media's not in there, we have a whole other section on media, so that term shouldn't be in there anymore, but.
Uh, I wasn't thinking that. Um, I, I was thinking that, uh, cause I, I'm well familiar with your practice. I often am copied on those emails, so you often will, uh, forward to staff and or, uh, assist the constituent by, uh, providing the link on the city website to the information that's hot. Because agenda setting has its own sort of, uh, uh, procedures and mechanism in the city, to bring the information back for council discussion at a public notice meeting, I see, it, it creates an inference that that's gonna happen with each piece of information that's brought, and I don't know that that is the case. So, um, I think you might highlight that, we could talk about how to.
This, this C may not be actually necessary at all, I don't know that it's particularly additive.
I would agree, I would just.
Just back, Mayor Kate, to your input, I think that it's a really important clarification, and we should definitely make it highlighted, highlighted in the sections where we're, we're gonna reshape, reimagine our communications. In particular, and this may be helpful for the community to hear, is that staff work really hard to make sure that if a community member's concern comes through a council member, whether it comes through a council member in CRM or whatever, or if the staff respond on behalf of one of you at your request, that the staff communicate back. I'm calling on behalf of the mayor, I'm calling on behalf of the council, they've received your emails and your concerns, and I'm the subject matter expert, and they've asked me to respond to you. So the credit needs to go back to, you know, to you, so we'll make sure we even codify that as well.
Thank you.
For staff. Uh, council, what council members should avoid, and this speaks to, um, Councilmember Hill, the individual versus the hat of the elected official. So not using your official title, not using city letterhead, staff time, or resources to endorse.
I, I do have a question about that, a more clarification, like if we are endorsing someone or something, I, or you are making a campaign donation, uh, it usually asks you what's your job title? So when, when it says in there not to use your official title, but, so you say you can use your personal email, and you can still say that you're a council member of the city of San Rafael, but then I really hear that you are not supposed to.
That no asterisk for identification purposes only. Right, and for the FPPC, so this is my only job, San Rafael. So I do fill out, cause I'm an employee of the city of San Rafael, we're, we're odd that way, I don't know if you know that. So I do, so I think there's two things, FPPC, if you were, you don't have another job, then you would put that in. But the other one for the campaign is for informational only, so it's kind of both, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's, it's, I think the way of written is a little bit confusing.
Which bullet are you referring to?
Yeah, the city letterhead, city staff time, or all that is understandable.
Well, it should not use city letterhead or city staff time.
I think official title, I think is in bounds.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I was getting.
With the deletion, okay.
I just was gonna suggest that, uh, the two sentences in B be split into a B and C, and you can make a new D, is those concepts are different and, uh.
Can you clarify, are you, are you suggesting as provided by California law be a separate?
That should be a separate section, cause it, it really, that's kind of an overall concept, where it's B relates to advocacy.
This, this is more of a gap in my knowledge, but even just the one that you cited, Rob, around as provided by California law, that we're not allowed to give direction.
I, I would have to research where that comes from, I'm not sure.
Cause I didn't know that.
I mean, we're a city manager, form of government, so I would have to look up in the, in the government.
This should be struck too, there was a couple of typos, this one, and I already deleted one down below, that were, um, noise. They, they didn't make any sense, and this is one of them, so my apologies.
That's cool, thank you, I was like, wow, that's a gap, I didn't realize that there was a law.
No, thank you for catching it. The, the reference was meant to go back to the policy advocacy, not, uh, anything to go back through. Oops, you still see that? Oh, sorry, I, um, set my screen, there we go. Okay. Any other questions on this section? Clarify, the what's in yellow is added just to, um, emphasize that the council member acknowledged they're not speaking on behalf of the city when speaking on matters of foreign policy, why these boundaries matter, which is fairly straightforward, and additional, uh, considerations. Again, these are just all points of clarification of protocols that everyone is already following.
Can I, can I ask for a reword? Sorry, we, I may have already passed it, but the public positions on local controversial matters. Cause it, it has an intersection of both what to do and what not to do, cause, um, just reading through it as it's written. Cause this is under what not to do, so it makes it seem like you cannot take a position on a controversial matter.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And it's more clear on what you, it's in the negative section, maybe.
It's more appropriate.
It's in the positive one too. It's in, it's in A, it's in the paragraph above.
Yeah, I mean, controversial is, uh, is a very subjective term. So, but maybe, maybe the most clear thing to say is just to, in, no matter what, whether it's controversial or trivial, there's a notion of making it clear that you were speaking on your own behalf, is, I think is the most important.
I moved it up to the affirmative, and I think you're right, controversial is just too subjective of a word, so. To that, I'll make sure it fits. Okay. Next section is conferences, professional development and travel. The goal of this section really is, so in the city manager's office budget, you, that the council has adopted in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, for example, twelve thousand dollars for, um, that's for the entire council's professional development, which includes the, the travel costs, et cetera. And so what, what we wanted to do was just have a process and clarity around how those funds are distributed equally amongst the council members. Um, from a process perspective, and this was a question that came up, I think, because it is so aligned with budgets, this is really a budgetary exercise, that at fiscal year budget and at mid-year budget, staff will prompt the council. So let's just start with fiscal year budget, when we do the budget and you pass the budget, we'll reach out to all of you and say, please let us know what travel conferences, things that you're interested in doing this year, so we can both make sure you're, we help with support with registration and getting early registration, cause those costs, you know, we can get, um, the early discounts, so we really wanna make sure we're on top of those things. And then there, the guidance in here is really just to help align that what you're doing is really in direct service is your role as a city of San Rafael council member, that there's an alignment with the strategic plan and the policy directives that the council has issued to the staff. So the process would be that we would take those into consideration and, you know, perhaps Mayor Kate, one year, you're really busy and you decide to get a different job, and you say, well, I'm not gonna do anything this year, uh, just using, as an example. Um, and so what staff then can do is kind of evaluate, analyze throughout the year. And if Councilmember Hill says, well, I wanna go to these three things this year, then we can work on, you know, redistributing the funds as, as needed and based on what each of you are interested in attending that year. I put a caveat in here that says with the exception that the voting. as needed and based on what each of you are interested in attending that year. I put a caveat in here that says with the exception that the voting delegate for CalCities those will be not part of that annual budget. That's a requirement. You have to go if you're the voting delegate. So that will be carved out and will be included in that allocation. So you've pretty much covered the intent there. Any questions or comments or?
I think this is great. We're adding it. Just an aside question. Does it have to be reported to the FPPC when you do this? I mean, my fellowship, by the way, was different just because it was all paid for by US Conference of Mayors. So I didn't pay a dime for that. So I did report it through FPPC. But so I didn't know if this has.
That's a great question.
We can get back to it if there's any FPPC requirements.
Just make sure it's listed in there. Just so no one gets tripped up on that.
Whether that's reporting out during the city manager and city council member reports.
Ever you want to do it. I just want to make sure that that council members are covered.
And I think by attending CalCities, if what I understand is reportable is if we get invited to a dinner that costs more than fifty dollars.
I don't, I don't know. I don't want to get into the details here. I just want to make sure that the council member doesn't get caught by surprise. Again, this group of five, we're really smart about it. But the future one might get caught up.
The other question that I have is from CalCities, there is the the policy committees where last year Rachel and I, we were serving on two different committees where they have like three meetings a year. One is Sacramento, one is Southern California, one online. So I wonder if that should be also included here as part of CalCities.
It feels like with CalCities, that feels like our job, right? That feels part, we're representing. It's not really a you know, not a particular subject area. It's really CalCities. I don't know. I mean.
I think our job is that we need to have a voting delegate. I think anything beyond that is a capacity and interest until this group of five, our participation in CalCities was literally just the that. And it might ebb and flow as well. I don't know. I just I don't know.
I have a question because I haven't, when you serve on a committee and these meetings are, you know, if you're going to be in service of that committee, you have to go to these meetings or, you know. It seems like it's somewhat similar to the voting delegate piece. And it's really like a day. These aren't like, it's not a.
They're normally, the, I think Sacramento was a one day, but with the Southern California, they're two days. Yeah, they're two days. There's a
There's not a register, there's not a cost to it. I think that could also be a carved out exception because it is advocacy on behalf of the city.
Okay, so then I would have the commensurate part be, it should be in city council appointment. Did not know you guys were out doing the policy stuff. And so again, how do we all stay on the same page? That's not on that document. So it needs to be listed, I think, on the appointment.
Do me on this?
Yes. I don't even know when we find out. I mean, because we applied to those. No, I know, I know. It just needs to be captured somewhere because otherwise, again, not this group because we all follow the rules. Ten years from now, someone signed up for all sorts of stuff and they're out doing all the stuff and it's not captured anywhere. There's no time back, no, like someone questions it. Now we can say, oh, no, no, it was said because we know they're on the policy. So whenever you get assigned to the whatever, whatever. I just think, you're right, your point will tell you it's not December, it might be fiscal year, but it just needs to be added. I just want us to have.
One stop shop. Yep. The other carve out you might consider is with a newly elected council member going January to the new council member emitters forum. That should not come out of, it feels like their professional development kitty. That should be something that is standard the city is providing for that first time.
And and I will personally, with CalCities, I feel even if you're not the delegate, you know, I think everybody has the convenience. For me, it gives me a lot to attend that event, even if I'm not a delegate. So I mean, I understand that we have like our budget, but I don't know. I have always felt that if it's something that people feel that they get something from it, that everybody should be able to attend, not only the delegates.
No, I think you can attend. It just won't be an automatic carve out. It'll be part of your, whatever twelve grand divided by five is. It'll be come from that.
Just as a note of fact is that transparent California does ultimately display as part of each council member's consultation that they were obligated for on the, well, it's publicly.
They're going to know how all the money that we're raking in.
Oh, yeah.
To say, it does show up.
Please check it out. They'll be amazed that we do this work.
Okay, I made some edits to clarify those carve outs and circle back and make sure we've got that. Any other questions about this section? Uh, let's see. City clerk, city attorney, Rob? The question when you left the room, just to follow up on this is whether there's, you don't need to answer it now, but I just want to make note is if there's an FPPC requirement to report out on the travel registration, the dollars spent out of the city's budget for council members' professional development.
Put that off the top of my head.
Not for now, just to follow up.
I get a quick answer, but.
We are, we are, we are now onto behested payments, which I would love for you to cover, Rob. FPPC, your political practices commission. Thank you for asking.
Right. So just picking up on Amy's question, the fairer political practices commission is a state body that requires reporting to the state annually by all elected officials and certain appointed officials with regard to sources of income and other facts regarding money. And so because this document is intended to guide council members in their activities, we thought it would be wise to provide this reminder regarding what the FPPC calls behested payments. And those are contributions to nonprofits that are made at the behest of a council or other person that has FPPC reporting requirements. So the idea would be that if I as a council member was encouraging you, Amy, to make a donation of ten thousand dollars to my favorite nonprofit and you were to do that and I was aware of that, then I would be required to report that on my annual report form. It's actually a separate reporting form that's listed there. I think it's eleven thirty or eight oh three, so that there's a record made that I am making that overture request to somebody to donate to a nonprofit that I'm encouraging to have a donate to. Questions?
Can I give a real life example?
Sure.
Why we have this in here? I've never heard of a behest payment. I've been doing this work a long time. PG&E reached out to me and said, we have five thousand dollars that we want to give to a nonprofit in the city of San Rafael. I was like, wow. All right. So I sent them a list of four nonprofits and they selected one.
Not be in there.
What?
I don't think that would apply.
No, I was, no, and they did it as a behest payment. I filled out the documentation.
Because you recommended, it was one of the three you recommend.
I didn't select it. I gave the four. It was, and I did say to have it be in alignment with whatever the thing they're trying to do. And just to end the story, they ended up giving it to Canal Alliance because it was in conjunction with a workforce program to develop PG&E employees. Perfect. We just got five more thousand dollars to help workforce development. But so just so you know, and I hear what you're saying too. So it's a both and. It was weird. I had never heard of it, but I wasn't going to pass up getting five grand for local.
Sure. And to be clear, you know.
I had to fill this whole thing out.
Hopefully I made it clear. It's not discouraged to ask people to give money to nonprofits. The idea is simply that if it's a gift of five thousand dollars or more, that it needs to be reported. It's as simple as that.
So I see that is a scratch, point eleven.
That was just extraneous. It's not, it was just an example. I mean, it can stay in. I just didn't think it was necessary.
Okay. So I just want clarification because I do work, my work I work in the nonprofit fundraising. So that, so that doesn't mean that every time I get a gift over five thousand dollars for the nonprofit, I have to report it.
I think we should consult further about that, but arguably, yes, you would have to report that.
Because I haven't done that and I've been doing this for over a decade. So is that a new law or?
It's been around.
I don't, I think there was a change in the behest because I've been up close and personal with FPPC lately. I think the.
I'd have to research that too. I don't know what the history of the law is.
Okay, I would love to know that.
Okay. We get on that one?
All right, sidebar.
We'll get into the end, get into the end and actually might have a quarter break if we can get, we might, or we can always have a break and then come back and.
I think everything in this section, again, similar to the beginning, was was already approved in the, in the twenty twenty four. I think the one section that had some edit is around the responsibilities of the vice mayor. Previously, there had been a bullet that said something to the effect of stay abreast of all citywide issues in case there's a need to step in and on behalf of the mayor or something to that effect. Which seemed like more than the expectation really should be of the vice mayor. I think this might have been, you know, as we've iterated through this document, part of it is district elections, these roles and really trying to make adjustments to like, what is the actual role? What are we really expecting of that person? And so the vice mayor role rotates on an annual basis, is the same, serves as a backup for the mayor for ceremonial responsibilities. And then Kathy suggested adding service like the parliamentarian at council meetings in the mayor's house.
That's a neat practice of the word parliamentarian. That should be mayor pro temp. The parliamentarian is.
Is a separate role.
A separate role.
Why we do this? Any questions or concerns about that change?
Rotate on an annual basis based on tenure? To follow our policy?
No, I think what we're trying to do is have the optionality because it's part of the entire discussion in terms of appointments.
Okay.
We want a flexibility. Maybe we want to do something different.
Exactly.
In this section, because you went down, but we went past, there was an highlighted addition that I just wanted to make sure we could elaborate on, which is if a council member wishes to provide an alternative perspective, it suggests a separate letter. So I just want to raise the floor on, raise that to the floor because I think I can detect that that could create. I don't know. Maybe we, I think that there's a way to achieve that without necessarily doing separates. I don't know if we want to suggest or if that's the right thing.
Uh, thank you. My apologies. I skipped over that inadvertently. Yeah, this was in response to some feedback. This is just a suggested language, but we could modify it or remove it.
So when I read that, I think of like a local jurisdiction that I've read in the newspaper that some council members are supporting maybe a project on school street and other people aren't Fairfax. And I can see, like, when I think of that, I think of how this could be abused versus used because to me, the underlying is a hundred percent council members should be able to weigh in and support kind of broader public decisions that are already in alignment with city council goals. What I worry about when I see this is that so now maybe, and I'm sorry to pick on Fairfax, but it's just better than, it's just, it's, yeah. So let's say that the council, the mayor at the time sends a letter to HCD saying we're in alignment. And then another council member sends a letter to HCD saying we're not in alignment. You guys don't know what you're doing. That behavior would be allowed with this sentence. So I, I think this is problematic. I don't, I, I never, I mean, obviously the council is always representative of the entire city, but I just, I worry about the, the not for this group of five, we're solving for the future five.
So perhaps a suggestion to achieve the opportunity for a council member to have a potentially nuanced or contrasting opinion is maybe down in the council section is that there is a I'm making this up, that the council member would reach out to the mayor to determine if a position has been taken or is being formulated so that it can be either captured or there's, just so that there's not a, how should I put it? We want to accomplish our multiple thing. We want to make certain that the city is able to be represented by the duly elected citywide, you know, person, in this case, the mayor, but that there is still a remedy or an opportunity for opinion to be shared by a council member that could be nuanced or contrasting. So maybe there's a way to just say like, has a letter been sent? Is there an opportunity to amend it? Or is there a way to, to then be able to take a position?
That's what you said. Two words. You said nuanced or contrasting nuanced a hundred percent because that's in alignment with policy goals. Like all these letters are always. When I send a letter on behalf of the council, I always check with staff, literally, and they're like, Corey, is this in alignment with our climate goals? Like that, they're not just random. So nuanced a hundred percent. Yet contrast, we're still in the, well, maybe they would just send it to staff and staff would be like, this is not where the proved five of us. So I I don't want us to be like some of the neighboring jurisdictions. I see what's happening there and I think it leads to loss of trust and good governance and all that stuff. So.
I know, I totally agree. I'm just trying to, here's what I'm also trying to, because I agree. I don't want to, I would not want it to play out that way. And I think that there's value if, you know, contemplating some counterfactual moment in the future, but that, you know, we allow for someone to say like, oh, I, how does, how does one in an elected role representing a district that might have a different opinion be able to talk about it without? I think that there's a way to be able to thread the needle on this without it saying like, hey, now you can no longer talk. There's got to be a way. So I don't know how to square that because it's, what I don't want to have happen is now we have an elected official now saying, I have to be quiet because we agreed to these norms.
Well, something quite, you said a different opinion. I guess, I think part of the confusion, and I really appreciate it, the city manager always now includes the letters that have been signed. So you all see them every week. So you know that they're always in alignment with city policy. So that what we don't want to have happen, and again, I'm sorry to be hugging on the negative, but I've seen it play out, is that of the five of us, we have approved a city goal and policy around climate, for example. And someone in the group in some future thing doesn't agree in climate change. So they're going to, based on what you're saying, their nuanced thing, they would be able to write a letter saying, well, I don't agree, even though the five of us have agreed on a climate policy, they could now write a letter saying, I'm not in agreement that the base is going to rise.
Totally. So I'm building on that. So is it, do we think that it's, because I think maybe, I just want to make sure that, because I want to do this live and not read it, take the time to go all the way through. Is it clear what you're saying in here that around policy consistency?
I mean.
Because I think that that is a, that is a foundational moment that there's a, that the letter is consistent with.
I'm not randomly, for example, I got a request, I request all the time. Probably three quarters of them. I asked staff the other quarter, I say no. So I got one to have the city of San Rafael write a letter to support the funding of whatever the name of the building is up on Mount Tam. Can't remember what it's called. And I wrote back and I said, that is not within our general.
Mountain home.
Mountain home, whatever.
Got that letter too.
Right. So, well, see, in those types of letters, you would either funnel to me or funnel to city manager. So I wrote back to them. See, this is a good thing. So I don't know who else gets those letters. And I wrote back and I was like, that's not within, based on the twenty fifteen thing, not within our purview, not within our roles and responsibilities, not within our jurisdictional boundaries. We are not going to write a letter. Good luck. I love Mount Tam. I hike there a lot. I think I just deleted it. Yeah. But that's, so that's kind of.
Yeah. So I guess, thinking about the future, I, I think with this council for most times when we approve policies, they are like five oh, you know, and I think, you know, but in the future, it could be like there is a new mayor that gets selected and has different opinions about the rest of the council. Or in the council, there is like mixed feelings about a specific topic. So potentially the mayor who doesn't think like I do could endorse something.
No, no.
That is in the, because I think the policy also can be interpreted.
No, no, no. So let's, let's do it the other way. So let's say the four of you approve something and I said no. And then I get a letter asking about that policy. I would still provide the letter that is what was approved by the council. It's not me saying, oh, the other four voted for it, but I didn't because as the figurehead, the approved, whether it's a three, two vote, a four, one vote, or a five, zero vote, that's the policy and I would write the letter even if I personally had voted no against it.
So that's why I like that sentence.
I've added at the end of the sentence, authorized author letters representing the city as a whole that are in alignment with the city's established policies and regulations adopted by the entire city council.
Perfect.
So it's outside of that bounds, it's a different story.
Council member?
It does because it affirms, I think, the intent of this, which is that, that the, the the duly elected citywide mayor is standing forward on established policy.
Yeah.
So I like that foundation.
Oh, my God, I would have a field day if I could just make stuff up. But that's not the way it works.
I liked, I know. I liked, I know, but though with the silent part now it's.
No, I think that's important. Thank you. Okay.
So. Yeah, we're we're really close. I think the only thing and. I keypad here is not operating very well. Oh, we covered the vice mayor already, and the city clerk has affirmed that there is nothing by resolution or anything that we would need to change.
I'll continue research, but as of right now, I'm finding.
It was a norm. I think that follows. Yeah. Okay. I think we're done. We'll do a, make some of those edits. We'll work on the communications piece and we'll circle back.
Can I ask council a question? As, are you comfortable giving staff a direction that like as they are putting these final pieces together? That it may make sense to move a section forward or move sections around, just for clarity of the document? That's all good. Because there's, as I can see.
We had numbering, so we could refer to a specific number.
I think there's, that's a good idea.
Yeah. But like highlighted or like we'd change it.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is, I know, when it comes to, well, but I'm thinking it would be helpful to have like an edited version. And then maybe have like a final version that comes to the council.
Yeah.
So we know the changes.
What I would do is just to be really clear and clear and transparent with the public is we'll make the revised edits. I will do briefings with either one or two of you at a time in accordance with the Brown Act with the, like, the next version. Reconcile everyone's to the final document, bring that as a clean final with a resolution.
Recognizing that the five of us have talked about it, what I don't want to have in those one-to-ones, that someone makes up something else is like.
Nothing needs to. No new content, otherwise we'd have to have another uh.
Okay.
Public meeting. We would, yeah, absolutely. So if there can be. Uh, agreement, I just want to make sure amongst everybody, no new content, we're only clarifying the conversation that we had here. And if that does come up, we would just put it on another public.
Should our break be ten minutes? We're going to start scheduling time from the others.
Can I ask for a point of order?
So um, we are now going to take a break for ten minutes. We'll.
Is it an official recess?
Official recess.
Correct.
Ten times.
What order? When is public comment on this item?
I I took all the public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Members of the public may speak on agenda items.
At the beginning.
You didn't talk about an agenda item.
In the beginning of the meeting, I said I'm opening public comment for the entire agenda.
Items not on the agenda. You said items not on the agenda.
I said on, hold the tape, on the agenda or not on the agenda.
I have a written comments on this.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, please.
Definitely, yeah.
You can submit it to the clerk.
Yeah, I know. It's very clear. If you're not done, you're welcome to give your.
I'm wrong.
So these are my two little things.
And I'll post that.
This is fine. Font consistency. The font's not consistent and then mayor. These are just consistency of the document.
And I did have three moments.
Right.
But.
I mean.
Uh, one in particular, I wanted to let everybody know because. I had difficulty following this because.
It's unbelievable.
City manager.
That is unbelievable.
Was adding notes and then we got off on the page. You know, she added things in. So I was getting um, I, yeah, I couldn't keep up. So my, this is just a document formatting suggestion.
Right.
Just you, because you've got mixed formats and you've got some bullet points. You use bullet points, but but in other places you use hierarchical lettering.
Correct.
And so. You know, I know this because my company is Berry Computer Training, so thirty-five years I've taught city, county staff. This.
Right.
How to do good documents.
Very nice view. I didn't look at the address on your show. I was like, early, but I'm like, I'm early, but.
One dot one, it's a legal style, one dot A. I did. Yeah, yeah. But also, uh, you need to include a table of contents, very easy to generate. You can do that. And you should be starting at page one, oh, page two.
Right.
Because you saw the confusion right at the beginning. They said page one and then somebody said, no, it's page two.
Right.
Because you're not starting the page, normally prior to that, you have I, you know, whether I, 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 I. You have a different numbering scheme before you start the actual contents, the actual contents that's on page one.
Oh, yeah.
Table of contents. And then you really should put the numbering down here to be one of how the however many it is. Because on a staple page, a page can easily drop off the top.
Right.
And then people go, you know, they might not realize that this is.
Yeah.
Just one of total number of pages.
Right.
That would just make it a better document.
Organized, yeah.
Better organized, easier to follow, because then I you I could see it. I could see up there. Yeah, I I don't even need, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
And see, he's concerned that he'd said at the beginning, and obviously I'm not going to remember what she said at the beginning, that it was for items not on the agenda.
So she did say for all items, either on the, and it's actually. Special meetings, you're actually not allowed to talk about anything outside of the agenda. Special meetings are just public comment on agenda items. She did open it for all items.
Yes, yeah.
Heard her saying not on the agenda.
It was for all.
I may have misheard her.
Is there any way you can check what she said?
I I know she said it because I heard her say it and I heard her say the, when as soon as she made the comment for or not on the agenda, that's not typical for special meetings.
She did say or not on.
She did, or not, or not on the agenda.
What's typical, as you know, is at the beginning, well.
A lot of meetings.
Now you have at the end of the meeting, but it's more typical to have any public comment on items not on the agenda. Which you now have, you have now that at the end of the agenda, but it's, that's typical. So that's where my brain went.
Yeah, and I think.
That's fine. I wrote out my comments, so you have to accept those.
And we will, yeah, and we'll post it online along the way. We'll scan them.
Get a picture.
I was going to suggest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can take a picture and you can hit them and email them to me. We'll make sure they get on the record.
Uh.
Also, and I know this is a little different than we typically, on regular meetings, we have public comment at each item, each interval.
That's for moments.
And special meetings are different. It's just at the beginning, you can take it all on the entire agenda own reach.
It's Andrews. We're figuring out about public comment, just to make sure, because we are so interested in what you have to say. So.
He's written it all out, so you're lucky. You're going to get to see it.
So the the city attorney is letting me know.
You you you're not demonstrating that you're interested there.
Well, I just.
But but that's, it's fine. You you're following whatever.
It's actually better to be written.
It is better to be written.
It's permanently, it's permanently.
I was trying to make it easy, so in case you didn't want to stay for the whole three hours, you could have your comments.
It's but you.
That's going to happen when I try to be.
You understand the inner conflict with that uh system because so much comes up during a discussion that, you know, that I wouldn't have thought of in advance. And so you're kind of tongue tied, you know, it's like, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really going on here? It's not just what was on paper and silenced. So then you have to write.
Yeah, well, not silence. I I mean.
We have to write it if you want.
We do this work because we live in San Rafael.
Oh, it's not, I'm not.
But I'm just, I want to be, I I want to clarify around.
You, but you under, but you understand.
No, no, a hundred percent I do.
That during the meeting, so much comes up, your engagement.
Yeah.
As is your job, but then the public can't engage in it unless we write something.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's fair. That's a good point.
Amy, where does your daughter live in Japan?
Tokyo.
She's in Tokyo.
Ten years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
That's that's why I didn't hear.
They have any plans on coming back.
You know, for some reason, we just don't plan that. They both have huge jobs.
Yeah.
And.
I mean.
Her husband has a new huge job.
Oh.
And he also has the most of his life in Japan. He's not American, but he's lived most of his life in Japan. And so he's really in his mind, it's more Japanese than he is, and he works in Japanese.
That's so amazing. So are the kids learning both English and Japanese?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's try.
We are going there in May.
It's the best time, really. No, um, well, actually, you know, Japan, I want to give Japan, Tokyo particularly, it's like a heated island. Um, it's the hottest place I've ever been to in the summer. It's hotter than the worst times. And you have to think of the.
And nothing works.
So I think now.
I wonder if father than the year.
Solid months of intensity.
You get really input before.
And of course, Japanese.
It's so humid, it's so hot. Because I've been in Singapore and it's hot.
Yes, exactly. So for sure, now September didn't used to be, August for sure, July, June. And I visited in May and it's already hot. It's kind of the heat switches on.
Starts in Tokyo, which is probably not Tokyo. I'm sure they don't have us riding in Tokyo, but.
But wait, no, that Tokyo is a bicycling city, something I wouldn't have guessed. And, you know, I I ride bikes. I mean, I'm someone who likes to get around the city on a bike. And it's unbelievable.
Perfect. Thank you.
Part, not just because it's their ethos, but in part it's too expensive to own a car. They make it very, they make it very difficult and also punitive if you do anything bad with your car. So someone in my daughter's family knows this guy DUI and he was put in jail.
Ah.
You know, you.
There's no.
Right. And so insurance is very, very high and it's a little bit scary. Plus, they drive on the left-hand side of the street, right?
Yeah.
So uh, there's some disoriented things for Americans.
That may be a day that I'm going to not stay.
Well, so.
No, they tried on the sidewalk, said, right, yeah, and and cars respect.
Changed.
Right.
No interest, okay, so it's like.
You're doing advice about public comment.
That's how I got around.
No, I think we shouldn't.
Just started around.
Netherlands.
Yeah, just where I went. I mean, I just get the fact that Netherlands. Teach their drivers.
I do.
Would never, yes.
But teach their drivers to do this, to open the door.
I've I've brought it up to um, I think the P P pack.
Yeah.
That that's something.
I thought it was such, yeah, tell that to people all the time.
Should be taught by D M B.
The other thing I've noticed now, the fact that.
Anybody want anything to eat? Who has one in touch? I ate at home.
Yeah.
Want to come back here?
I, I know, for some reason this watch, even though I go off the cheap, yes, it's. I don't know what else. Alrighty. Okay, um. Sorry, I know what else was gonna be, okay. So then. Uh, we've been rolling again, Madam City Clerk?
We are.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. That was a lovely ten minute break. We shortened it by five minutes to stay on schedule. The city attorney would like to say something before we get to the next agenda item.
Yes, thank you. I like this new method where I speak in the middle of the room. I think I'm getting to that. Every city council meeting. So I've been advised about how public comment was called at the outset of the meeting. I got here a couple of minutes late. Due to traffic, I've spoken with Public Works about the traffic. Um, and so in my judgment, there was no Brown Act violation. However, I think there was some confusion as expressed by Mr. Andrew about what the procedure would be that we would adopt today. So this is my advice on what we're, um, uh, gonna do now. Um, I, I think Mr. Andrew had comment that he wanted to make on the last agenda item that has been concluded. And I would advise that he should be invited to do so, Mr. Dickinson. And, uh, uh, if Amy also wants to, they should be invited as well. I don't see any other members of the public here. I, I recommend using the two minute rule because we are under time constraints today. The city clerk's prepared to use her Apple Watch to time. Then, uh, when public comment on the last item concludes, we have two more agenda items today, which for some reason I can't remember, but again, it's early in the day for me. Agenda item number two is discussion regarding the process for handling emerging priorities that may require, you know, some change in budget. And then the third item is discussion regarding committee appointments. After we conclude this additional period for public comment, our first agenda item A, I would suggest that we immediately call for public comment on the second agenda item. And then have the council discussion that item. When that concludes, call for public comment on third agenda item. And then that'll be the conclusion of public comment. Understood?
Understood, and I'm happy to do my little thing too.
Okay. We're here.
Okay, so public comment. So first we'll do on agenda item one. Right? And we just can. A.
Their A B and C.
And then once we conclude that, we'll do on B. Mr. Dickinson, go ahead.
Yes, um, so I'd like to refer you to, uh, page seven, bullet point three. Um. It relates to the group kind of email and in the public perception, it's a black hole. And they actually call the end homelessness a black hole email. You send something there and nothing ever comes back. And I, I, I supported your discussion to try to resolve that in a more meaningful way. Who not, who's at the end of it? That's, I think, was what you came up. And then page nine. C. Uh, I think it's a bad idea to take that out when a council, um, nine C, a council member may engage with constituents. By taking it out, you're saying they may not engage with constituents. That's the implication of removing it. So, uh, that's important to leave in. Maybe you need to modify the wording a little bit, but you're cutting out any opportunity for the public to give you input. So what you do with it then, you might need to change that. I, I think the difficulty you're having was, was with the council deliberation. But just striking it out is a bad idea. And then on just basic document formatting, I think you should use hierarchical numbering. I got confused when the city manager started adding things and then the page numbers ran off. Cause she added things. She was on page twelve, but mine was page eleven and I got lost in here. I have enjoyed this meeting. I think it's informative and productive and was very interesting. But I could have followed it better if it said one dot one A, B, C, and so on. You need a table of contents. You need the total number of pages. On stapled items, the back page can easily drop off. So if it says one of seventeen pages, then you're absolutely certain you've got all the information. Will there be a Spanish version of this also? I think there should be. You know, when you adopt it and it should be circulated and posted down there and be available.
Thank you. Thank your comments. Please light over.
Yes, um, just in, um. And to what Ken, right, said.
Yes.
Um, I've already emailed you and I think Rob and Christine on that very same black hole email.
Yeah.
Title and I, what I suggested for transparency is that if you're going to have end homelessness as a subject, as a topic, that somewhere on your web website, you should say who it's going to. It's very strange just write to, uh, like a name and not know who it's going to. We may or we may not follow up and see, you know, uh, but at least we know. If it's just going to end homelessness, who, who is this? And I think from a public perspective, you need to let us know where it's. So I made that suggestion. I have to go to another meeting.
Do you want to comment on item number two before you go?
Um, I already have and I, thank you for asking.
Okay.
Um, in that, um, I also represent the San Rafael Tree Group and we're very interested in you adopting a, a tree policy as a priority. And as you know, we've been working on this for five, six years and it simply has never been a priority aside from one ordinance. And, uh, we would like to see tree champion, uh, on the council, but more importantly, the whole council will be tree champions.
Thank you. The, the next, just for clarification, the next agenda item is on process, not on substantive, but your comments are noted. Mr. Andrews.
Hi, Gregory Andrew from San Rafael Meadows. I've written these out, but I'll try to speak them.
Hi.
Uh, comments regarding the agreement item that says, states the following, says, council members may only communicate city positions that the full city council has voted on in open session. So that brings up the question of what, what are the consequences if a council member does not follow these disagreement or violates the agreement? And I believe that these, this document, this government document needs to provide consequences for not following, uh, violating the agreement. And as an example, on October fifteenth of this year, at the three fifty Mary Dale press announcement, Mayor Kate did in fact state that a city position that the council has not voted on. Mayor, the mayor stated that this project will be happening. So that had not been voted on. That was violation of this, this particular agreement. So this needs consequences for not behaving, not just whoops, you know, that's not good enough. Uh, the second comment is related to what, uh, Mr. Dickinson just brought up about. Uh, co, uh, council members may do item C. I recommend and request that you add the line which and is expected to, so that it reads a council member may and is expected to engage with constituents. Um, uh, encourage council members to engage and show that as an expectation. And thirdly, my last comment is the, uh, and, and actually, uh, I want to give you an example of that. A, a member of our neighborhood contacted council member Kurtz this week about meeting about three fifty Mary Dale. Kurtz a member. Council member Kurtz refused to meet. Um, we want you to be encouraged to, to meet with your constituents. And thirdly, uh, it was stated the term alias emails. And I gotta say, just the use of that term alias, uh, to me, in my opinion, demonstrates a council man, the council member's willingness to hide information and erodes trust. Terrible, terrible message. Thank you.
So I'm going to amend my prior advice, um, slightly. Uh, reminded by the city clerk that there were no written materials provided for items B or C, and therefore the public present, uh, really doesn't know what the discussion's going to be.
Yes.
We are instead going to amend the procedure slightly. We're gonna call item B, have the council discussion item B, then take any public comment on item B. Then we're gonna do item C, then take any public comment on item C.
Give her that clarification. All right, rolling right along, staying on time. Patty. Floor is yours. Christine, the floor is yours.
Okay. So the context for this, uh, discussion item, or this agenda item rather, is as you all know, the council adopted a three year strategic plan for fiscal years twenty five through twenty eight. Uh, this past June and then subsequently last month, the work, an annual work plan for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, with specific quarters and deadlines and timelines, very specific document. And at the time, we talked about the importance of how we would reprioritize, provide progress updates to the community and to the council as emerging priorities move forward. So this is a, a bit of a primer. None of this is fully baked. The, the hope out of this is that we've come up with some evaluation criteria in draft form that we'd like some input and feedback around. Does this, it's all sound right? Are we missing anything? So there's no action on this item. It's really just to kind of present a methodology and an approach that we're in the process of developing. Eventually we'll come to the council with a midyear budget in final form. So annual work plan reprioritization principles, um, strategic alignment. So as a new emerging priority were to come forward, one of the lenses we want to look through is does it tie back to those seven pri, um, priority areas? So we know there's lots of initiatives and projects that can roll up to those. If a new emerging priority comes in, doesn't fall with one of those, we would say it's not under consideration under this three year strategic plan. Uh, equity and community impact, uh, consider who benefits and who bears the risk if something else is advanced or re-prioritized or deferred. Uh, capacity where any new major priority, um, without an identified resource or trade off should be the affirmative. We should have an identified either resource, uh, appropriation request or really clear trade off on what may or may not happen. Uh, if something else is re-prioritized, legitimacy and transparency. What a shadow priority means is, um, you know, just the layering on top, the thing that we're trying to avoid where it's, um, just adding one more thing to the plate and then, uh, stability with flexibility. So the deviations are going to require staff analysis. They're going to have to look at things like the level of effort and what are the trade offs? And I'll just say, I did an exercise with this in consideration of what we have on our plate right now with, for example, three fifty Mary Dale. At the time we adopted the strategic plan and even the work plan, it was, it, it, we were nowhere near this far. And at this very moment, there still hasn't been a decision made by the council. So we've, we're gonna have to evaluate if the council approves the item when it moves forward, uh, to a public meeting. Depending on the outcome of that, we may need to look at some things to shift. And I did it at my own exercise using this criteria, trying to find what, what could push? Because that sort of project is such a cross departmental project, right? It's Public Works. It's not just the homelessness division. It's, uh, city attorney's office. There's, you know, five or six departments that are really affected by a project that large. So I started to go through what the council priorities are in this annual work plan. And I'll tell you, it's not, it's not easy. This is a difficult task. Um. So the things that are really high priority council, um, let me go back to this and, and then I'll go back to the example at the end. So the evaluation for criteria for emerging priorities, we've got to look at legal mandates. If, you know, we have unfunded mandates and legal mandates, it says by January first, you must do this. If that happens, we've got to push something else off because that, we have to be compliant with that. Alignment with the strategic plan, which I already mentioned, um, that those emerging priorities should reinforce what's already been established by policy and not compete with them. Uh, what's the community impact is got to deliver meaningful measurable benefit to residents. Opportunity leverage, this is a tricky one because we get ourselves caught in a trap of, oh, this is a really amazing grant. We should apply for it. Then we get it. Now we've got another project on our plate that we don't want to be by default re-prioritizing because of these time limited grant or partnership opportunities. Nevertheless, some of them are too good to pass up. I would say six twenty canal is a perfect example of that, right? We had trust for public land come forward. We had the county come forward. It's incredible moment to seize the day on this property, that very unique opportunity that the county, community's been asking for for thirty years. How do we pass that up? Well, what that means is other things are gonna have to wait until two, year two or three.
Christine, a clarification. When you're talking about time limited grant, is it the time to apply for the grant or the time to spend the funds?
To deliver and spend the funds typically. So if, right now in public works, we have a number of projects that, uh, that we have to complete by a certain date. And then, so anything new that comes in from a resource capacity standpoint, it can preclude us. So we just have to be really deliberate and strategic about that. We have to assume we're gonna win these things. And what does that mean? Is it actually gonna trump the, the C I P, the capital improvement plan or something else like that? So it's a really good question. And we've been very, very lucky with, with, um, achieving a lot of grants recently. And so that's just something that we need to really be mindful of because, um, there's a lot in the queue right now. And if we were to, uh, we, we, again, we don't want to do that by default. We want to do it deliberately with council action.
And, and my other clarification is like, when you request a grant, um, that's assuming that we always need like a staff member obviously to manage the grant and the work. Uh, but maybe part of the grant could be like outsourcing outside our staff.
You mean to do the actual work?
Yes. Yeah, um, that, for sure, that could help. I think the reality though is even in, we can't completely outsource it. It's still the city's.
You see.
Dreamers, there still needs to be oversight of that consultant. So it's a smaller body of work, but it's not an insignificant, insignificant body of work. It's the, the city still has to be accountable for the whole grant. Um. Resource feasibility, uh, as you know, the strategic plan and the work plan are aligned with the budget. Um. It's very difficult, the level of effort analysis, sometimes something that seems like, oh, that's just not a big deal. It's just gonna take, you know, a handful of hours. Um, when you really dig into it, it, it's a bigger thing than we, than we realized. And then, um, long term value, that strengthen fiscal sustainability, city operations. From a process perspective, what I was just talking about evaluating the emerging priorities, making recommendations. The criteria, we just kind of went through those. An impact assessment, really looking at how this impacts not just the priorities, but, um, staff capacity and, uh, uh, other resources, not just people, but, um, the cross departmental piece is a little tricky because, because so many of the projects and initiatives, it's not a one to one. It's not like, okay, public works is just gonna not do this project and they're gonna do this one instead. It's not that, it's not a one to one trade off. And so we have to look at the totality of the impact on the other departments. I'm looking at Rob because often city attorney's office has legal work to do associated with a project and they're, they've planned out their time based on what is on their work plan. And if something new comes in, then we've got to account for what are they gonna defer? So it can be a complicated exercise. Um, and then midyear budget and strategic plan update, which I'm gonna go over in a minute. So the trade off, no major add without a visible offset. So staff will identify what the business cases for the trade off, their revised new timeline for deferred work. Defer an existing objective project or initiative to a specific future quarter or fiscal year. Theoretically, it could even fall completely off the three year work plan and then we'd be putting in a placeholder for the next three year strategic plan. Um, there may be reappropriation of funding needed and then, um, or adding temporary capacity or limited, um, consultants with a funding source to augment or re-prioritize. Impacts on departments, I went over this a little bit already. The workload management piece is tricky because, right, it's not just the initiatives, the project and the strategic plan. It's the day to day operations of the whole city. So if we're balancing not just, there, there may be sacrifices in, you know, maintenance in other parts of the city. For example, if we want to prioritize another paving project or something to that effect. Um. Budget adjustments, scope reduction. So it's either, you're gonna love this. I did this for council member Kurtz. Uh, not, not just for her, but we, we both love this triangle. So the analysis of project management triangle, as we all know, is time, cost and scope. Um, quality has to be the core of everything and one of these things have to give or two of them have to give in order to make space. So this is the fundamental exercise. I think one of the things that's the most difficult on this triangle is scope. So time is fairly straightforward. We can estimate costs, but when it comes to, like I said, the level of effort and how many specific initiatives or activities would have to push in order to make space for a larger objective or goal? Again, it's not one to one. So that analysis is gonna have to, it's incumbent on the staff to really bring well informed data to the council if there's a recommendation to, uh, to re-prioritize a, a goal objective. So next steps, uh, we will be presenting at fiscal year, midyear budget rather, in early twenty six. I'm not sure of the exact date yet. That will come to the finance subcommittee. Typically February, sometimes it runs into early March. We'll provide a progress update on where we are in the current annual work plan. Um, and present any new requests or emerging priorities and capacity to address those new initiatives. So we'll be reporting out on what's on track, what's potentially been re-scoped or needs to be re-scoped. What needs to defer with new target dates? And then there may not be any recommendations. It may be a progress update. And we say, these new emerging priorities have come forward. Staff doesn't recommend we do anything with them yet. And then the council can deliberate, public meeting, whether or not they agree with staff's recommendation or they wanna, uh, you want to say, you know, we hear you, but we really do want this one to move forward and we're willing to sacrifice or do the trade off on the, on the items that staff has presented. So that's the end of this slideshow. I'll just qualify anecdotally that as I went through the exercise myself, trying to imagine what I would recommend as the trade offs. It, it, it is really difficult. So I'm just gonna give you a couple of examples. This is not a recommendation I'm making. This is not, right, just illustrative. Um, we've got work to do on the parking permit program to take kind of the next step with it. That takes a lot of D P W resources and a lot of the projects, both of the, uh, six twenty canal, for example, we have it in our work plan, but the scope now that is actually gonna close a land deal to fence and secure and work on what's the interim use of that site is gonna be. I think that, that's gonna, we're gonna evaluate that scope. And what I'm telling you is this, we're gonna need to push something from D P W. What's difficult is there's all these things we want to do, all these amazing things we've committed to the community. There are things that, um, we control the deadline of and we don't control. So one of, so that's the lens I was also, I was trying to look through to be kind of, the parking permit program is important, but there's no regulatory deadline that says you must have this done by such and such date. Another example is, um, oh, what did I? Oh, the homelessness action plan. It's something we, we really want. It's really important. It's, again, illustrative. I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, but the city manager's office time and what we're gonna be doing over the next six to eight months. We can start working on it. We may not be able to get it to council by the end of the fiscal year. So right now the work plan says Q four. It's likely that we're gonna have to come back and say, you know, we shoot for the moon and then we get realistic as things shift and change. We know this isn't a static document. It never is intended to be that. So those are the kinds of things, the difficult conversations that staff is gonna have to bring to the dais to have, um, some of the, uh, I'll just mention beautification and the gateways has been a huge priority of the council. Something we really, really want to work on. It's also the same sort of staff impact. So we wanna, that, I'm just, um, forecasting that how difficult this exercise is gonna be, maybe harder than we even really imagined. But I think it will make for a really good public policy decisions and really good pub, public process to have the community weigh in as well, um, as these things move forward. Cause we can't say yes to everything as much as we would all like. So my question to you is, are there any, in particular on the evaluation criteria? Cause this is what staff's really gonna use in that analysis to bring forward to you in the, with the midyear budget.
So before we have any questions on it, I just want to appreciate the fact that we're in this moment because this is brand new. The whole goals and objectives, three years, single year work plan. So we are creating a new internal process. So that's the other reason why this is being brought. And I know the council has verbally said in all those meetings, we get this trade off piece. And what staff is now saying like, okay, we hear you saying that, but this is what it really looks like. So that's really, so it's. Anyway, so thank you for, for noodling through this. Yeah, council member Kurt, yeah.
So within our C P I, the projects that come through, which is primarily D P W, there's been a ranking and rating process where everything is quantified. Are these gonna be quantified? That's the first question. And then is it using the same quantification process that's used by D P W?
No, I, that's a great question. So in the, in the capital improvement plan, we do use kind of a waiting score of project by project to determine priorities. Not to say that we couldn't at this point, we're not planning on that. I think the quantification and the waiting criteria would be so overly complex that it would be kind of a diminishing returns exercise. Um, so. Yeah, I mean, it's something we can consider and think about, but I think given this being kind of our first year and our first pilot.
I would, let me just interrupt for one sec, and I am interrupting. It is hard because a lot of these are not real quantitative type of measures. But even if you all collectively take it away and say, on a scale of one to five, we're gonna just put a rating. And then at least it gives something to drive the conversation to help. I mean, so if you say urgency and legal mandate on a one to five and whoever, within the staff, you start evaluating that, then at least it brings up things up to the top of the list versus things at the bottom of the list. It's just a tool that I've used, um, even when it's not as quantifiable, it just helps to get people's input.
So the, the suggestion is scale of one to five, what would the scale be? One meaning?
However you define it. So urgency and legal mandate, I'd say it would get a five. Right? Let's just say, right, you have, it has to be done by a certain date. That would get a five and unless there, and then you collectively as a staff or maybe we as council would also be able to do sort of that rating and at least it would be above the line. You know, there'd be a number of items that would go above the line. and then some would go below the line, to at least limit that conversation. It's, again, it's a tool you could play with to see, but it helps. So just to give a bit of quantification to things that really are emotionally charged.
Would, would it be possible to have the first year of not doing that and seeing how it could be? Because I I understand what you're trying to do is to help provide additional information, and I'm concerned, because this is so brand-new, that I hear staff now, they're trying to figure out urgency and legal mandates. I mean, obviously, we already know that that's a priority, but let's say, community impact comes forward. Like, I I don't want us to get lost in the process versus the thing, but I agree that that might be something we want to introduce. I'm a little worried about introducing it at the outset, because this is so new. Like, I want to kind of see, I kind of want to watch staff wrestle with it and see if that's even needed. So I I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, we've, I've done it where we've collectively sat around the table and said, God, it really should be a three. No, it's collectively because of X X reason, it's a four.
But we're not.
No, 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 we, we staff, we staff, we, when I'm managing projects, I collectively work on my teams to say, okay, this should be above the line, below the line.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I would like to speak from the other end of the spectrum, um, in that, the answer is no. Um, we went through an exhaustive process, we rate everything, we laid out this plan. Um, it should be very, very, very much the exception that any sort of deviation from that adopted plan is even considered. So, for example, I wouldn't call it emerging priorities, it has to be urgent mandates, um, something that is, um, that was unexpected. Uh, that that would be my first requirement, it must have been unexpected. And if we had known about it when we made the plan, we would have put it there. And it has to be significant, not because, um, you know, we were into gateways when we did this, but now we want to do, I don't know, roadways or medians or something. Um, that's, that's not, um, you know, that's not what we want to capture. I I think we need to defend the plan, um, and the budget, or this is just gonna go on forever. Um, so that, the the purpose of having a plan, and we understand, sometimes it looks like it's going to take this much effort, but it ends up being this. Yeah, it's called contingency planning, and that's why we pay you folks the big bucks, to think about that stuff. Um, and to build that in, um, to the plan, so that you've, you've figured that out and that there's budget available for those contingencies. Um, so, um, I think this should be very much, um, a, um, an extremely high-level and, uh, requirement, um, I, I wouldn't, I mean, we have one cri- criterion that is, this must be an emergency or something like that, um, to to deviate from the, uh, adopted plan.
Okay, yeah, councilmember.
So I want to build on the Vice Mayor's comment, so I I concur. Uh, and the corollary to that concurrence is that each time there is even, um, a metaphorical pulling of the trigger to conduct that analysis, that's not a non-trivial analysis to do across departments. So, if I may, because you you didn't say this explicitly, but that there is maybe a two-step to say, do we even conduct the full analysis? Because those are non-trivial, those could take a week, those could deviate from a lot of really critical staff time on other things. So I would, hopefully, there's a judicious moment to say, do we even run the triage analysis on this?
Yeah, I think that's really great feedback, because in my mind, we're gonna do that for sure. It's just at what level, and, you know, administratively, we would absolutely have to do that. We, I mean, we do it all the time, even just general operations and practice. I mean, we, you know, we all get requests to do things all the time that we can't say yes to. But I think it's important to be explicit about it, um, because we aren't gonna just spend weeks and weeks and hours and hours on every single thing. And, um, just, you know, to add on to that, I think the requests come from councilmembers, then they also come from the community, right? There's like two, or the state mandate. So there's these points of entry, and maybe that would be also helpful to clarify, because I support and agree, we should be defending the plan, that's why we spent the time and energy into putting it to place. Sometimes, these, and part of these criteria were, um, an effort to help educate and manage expectations of the community. As they come forward, it it can be challenging to say no to a really great idea. A community member really wants this done in their neighborhood, and we need to be able to explain and and help them specifically engage to to understand that that this is the exercise that, you know, this is how we consider what we need, what we can say yes and what we can say no to, what we have to say no to.
And to build on this, because I actually think we are doing this in the way that you've just talked about. So when I look at, um, the illegal food vendors, so that came up over a year and a half ago, but it did not get into our goals and objectives until we talked about it as a group in a community forum, getting all of the input. So you're right, for those eight months, it it was, uh, enforcement here, it was kind of sporadic, but, so, so I guess I'm agreeing with what you're saying, because that ended up being really, really huge. So it wasn't that the staff didn't do anything in those intervening months, but we waited until we were all there at the table, because we knew that that was gonna be a really big scoped effort. So I think I'm showing that in practice, it is working the way that you, and we, we're coming back every six months. If there was another street vendor type of thing that came up, it would be only a time lapse of a couple months until the entire council gets to talk about it in context. Because I think that's what we're always trying to get, right, the broader context.
I have one more.
One more thing, and then, yeah.
Uh, yeah, and it's not explicitly in there, but, um, because I I like that there's a dimension, and there's kind of two ways to address the the time dimension, right? There's defer, but there's also protract. Um, I know that that is being considered, but I just want to make sure that that is, uh, considered as well. In other words, you can stretch, there are certain types, not everyone, but there are certain types of projects.
Phase it.
You can phase it, and just say, we're gonna allocate half instead of.
Um, and somewhere in here, we talk about, you know, sometimes we take something we thought we were gonna do a full-blown implementation, and we say, instead, we're gonna phase it over three years, and we're not gonna be able to get the whole thing done at one time. Um, I want to go back to, uh, councilmember Kurtz's feedback. I think one thing that maybe we could do as a next step in that space that I think would also be really helpful for the community is, because we know the stuff that's legal mandates, but that's not necessarily outwardly known. And that's, there is a little above the line, below the line in a binary way, right? We're not going to ever come to you and recommend that we not do something that we're legally compliant to do. So maybe state the obvious, but the work plan doesn't necessarily codify, you know, codify that, so maybe that's a, another tool we can use.
Many legal mandates, we actually have runways.
Exactly.
So we have usually a year to do it.
Yeah.
So it's, again, it still falls within that six-month.
Yeah, there could be a deferral, doesn't mean it's not ever gonna get done, but it might be slowed in the process for a good reason.
That's my guy.
Yeah, um, I just have like, I guess, a question, um, or comment around, um, the, you know, I was really trying to see if we could get like a volunteer coordinator, um, because I think there are like, uh, some, we were talking, for instance, the beautification project. And, um, and there's the limitation of our staff time and actually our staff doing the work. But I think for certain projects, when we are talking about beautification, it would be maybe run by all the Rotary Clubs in San Rafael, or it could be like a community organization of volunteers. And knowing that sometimes volunteers require a lot of work from our staff, and also that even if they don't, you still have to have a staff member to be working on that. But I just wonder how we could leverage the support that a community member might want to give the city. Um, so there is no, maybe, so so we can be, do more projects, I guess, that fit within our priorities. And another example could be graffiti, right now there's a lot of graffiti in the canal. If we would have like volunteers just going into public spaces, erasing the graffiti, and again, knowing that this require like, um, staff members. So what is the balance of like, we, we could actually use, this is, I guess, again, about using like external sources, where we don't have to wait always for like our staff to deliver the work.
External sources, meaning?
Meaning there could be like.
CBNL?
Like, well, CBNL could coordinate maybe, but I'm thinking more like, uh, for instance, like a Rotary Club wants to, uh, sponsor the entrance into the city of San Rafael, beautification project. Um, so it's not our staff actually doing the work, knowing that you still have to have a coordinator and a project manager from our staff to do it. But I'm just thinking on some certain things could be done, um, you know, utilizing the community. Sometimes I get community members that they really want to volunteer. And beautification is always the, kind of like the word. So how can we leverage that enthusiasm and that actually work? So in a way, they are working for the city to make the project viable. And it will require work staff, staff work, but not as much as if they were actually doing the project.
Yeah. I, I want to just tag on to that. I think that's a really, really important idea of how to think about that, but I also think that the triage of a request is, is, is in of itself a project. And I think we did, you did a really good job, was really helpful in the work plan, where it wasn't just, and it, I'll use the vendors, which is not really the right example, but the evaluation and sizing the work around the vendor is a separate project in of implementation. Like, there's so many aspects of that, and I think that goes back to, you said phasing, right? Phasing the type of thing, and then, um, and this sort of goes along with, the pilot of a project isn't of itself a project. Because a lot of people say, we'll just pilot it, and that drove it crazy, as, you know, like a pilot is a project.
Well, much as I like the volunteer program, it feels like a policy decision. Um, you know, I think at this point, um, I don't know how that relates to the criteria.
Yes, I agree. I, I think we straightened off our topic here. Um, and if you want to bring forward this such a proposal, it should be in the budget to provide. Right now, we're talking about how to change the strategic plan.
So this actually related to the strategic plan, and, um, and I brought it up during the strategic plan, so I understand that this is not, now we are not going to change. I guess when we look at the semi-annual review, I will bring it back again. And I guess, um, if, I just feel it is kind of like an opportunity that we are not taking advantage of. And, um, so it's not exactly evaluation criteria for emerging priorities, but I'm like, how can we utilize, um, outside sources to be able to deliver more?
Christine, do you want to respond? Because I think we understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I think how it relates to this, or how I'm translating it, is separate from the content of the thing. Um, is, does that example fit? You know, how would we, is, is part of what you're trying to ask is, like, how would that example fit in evaluating these criteria? Like, how would we go about that? I think scope is the, is the thing, right? So what you're talking about could be this very robust program. Um, I do think it's a policy-level issue. I think that anticipating and knowing that that's something you're gonna bring up at mid-year budget and say, I'd like to make this a priority, so that we can start working on what would have to be deferred. I can tell you 100% in order to make a program like that work, even a small one, we would have to, we'd have to move a lot, frankly, HR and sustainability and City Attorney's Office, there's a lot of liability, unfortunately, gets involved in that stuff. So it, there's a big upfront lift in trying to develop a program like that, and then adding a staff person, even probably at that level, is gonna cost the city about $125,000, $250,000. So we'd have to figure out, like, what staff person are we not gonna have in order to make space for that staff person? Because it would be adding a whole headcount FTE. So that's the analysis we would do, and we would.
Can I take a speck to process, though? So this is a great example. So I would not want the five of us bringing forward things between now and the mid-year budget. That conversation, you're, I don't want you pre-working if all five of us came up with our, this, we think this is an emergence priority, you brought an example here, I'm sure the five of us could think of other ones. Now you've gone and done work on 10 possible things, and you bring it at the mid-year budget. I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think at the mid-year budget, when you say, um, unless you're going super obvious, which I can't even think of what it would be, that's the opportunity on the dais in public that you put your, you say your thing, you haven't done, because otherwise you've expended a bunch of work, and maybe the, and maybe the rest of the council isn't in agreement. We're not saying that we're not, but maybe it's not, maybe it's some other thing. So that's the thing that we're trying to avoid.
We had, we had a process that we used with Nevada and Sonoma, where at a certain point during the year, whether a member of the public or a council had an idea for something wanted to add to the work plan, they wrote up a little paragraph, it was given to the city manager, and those items were brought in a work session to the council. And then the council voted, you know, I mean, the count, the individual, individual brought it up, got three minutes to make their case, and council said, we want to move forward or we don't. If it got, if it did not get a majority of votes to move forward, it died there. No staff work, no staff time. Then if a majority of council said, we're interested, then count the staff and council put, it was clear about, we'll put this much time into it, and we'll bring it back for a more robust, a true agendaized Brown Act conversation. But that's the, like, the triage piece.
So can I just do like a follow-up? So the reason I was thinking about this is, is not bringing a new idea to the council, it's like, based on the scope of work that we already have, what could we do?
We should do it a different way.
Exactly.
Oh, you mean implement it a different way?
Could the work be implemented in a different way?
Like, when we were talking about beautification, you, you actually used that example. Um, it requires a lot of our team members, and I hear you that you need, you know, the legal and all that to use volunteers, but is there a different way, um, that we could utilize our community to do a project?
I love the idea. I mean, I'm, I'm all for the idea, I think it's smart, and I think that, that the challenge, I'll go back to process in one second, but the.
Challenge, that's what's on the air.
The challenge is that the, the time and energy it would take to establish the program, there's a lot of pressure to get beautification in now, 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 and if I do that program and hire that person first, it's gonna delay it six months to a year, I could guarantee you. So those are the trade-offs, right? Back to process, I just remembered, in our document.
Yes, we're talking about process.
It says, when emerging priorities, urgent emergency priorities or policy initiatives arise outside of the strategic planning cycle, councilmembers should reach out to the mayor first, to the extent allowable under the Brown Act, to determine if a new issue rises to the level of potential reprioritization of a council goal. If so, the council, the mayor will confer with the city manager to determine next steps. I would, I, I think something to councilmember Hill's point is to determine if an analysis is warranted even. Do that step one as part of that initial.
Next steps, if any.
Um, and then, uh, to Kathy's point, what we have planned on an annual basis, we've talked about that on the dais, is that when we brought the last work plan, we're a little bit, you know, we're already in Q2, which is because it's the first time we're doing it, right? We're trying to kind of catch our tail on the implementation. Going forward for year two, we will have a workshop with the council in context of the budget. It will probably be sometime in April, May, ahead of bringing that all forward, and we'll do that very thing. So that, that's, you know, the next step, I think, in the process, my head was at mid-year. But we'll define both what the mid-year is gonna do and not do, and then as things percolate up through the year, how to get them either from a council member to you, Mayor Kate, or from community members to my desk, so we can have a complete picture of what's come forward during the year.
Christine, just doing a time back, because we have 20, 35 minutes left, and still the last item. Is, did you get what you need, kind of a little bit of a pull-stuff from?
Yeah, that was really helpful, yeah, great feedback. Did you get the response you needed, councilmember?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So open up a comment, either of you like to comment on this item.
And they can send, uh, I'd like to comment on the city manager's comment about 350 Merridale. Uh, you created an August 11th special closed session city council meeting and locked up 350 Merridale under negotiations for price and terms of payment. It's still in there, it never came out of there yet. Uh, on September the 2nd, you announced in the minutes, there were no reportable items from the August 11th meeting. How could you possibly talk about it at the, uh, September, October 15th press conference? How could you hold the meeting there? It wasn't your property yet. So, um, there's a lot of questions around that. And Mayor Kate, my wife, Janet Shirley, asked you about that property specifically down at Vivalon, and you hid behind the Brown Act, said you couldn't talk about it because it was in negotiations. But you have been talking about it. How could you not have talked about it and have that press conference with everybody on board? And you told us it was a done deal, and you also told us that you were there with councilmember Kurtz and councilmember Hill, but you represented the entire city council, those were your words. And you announced that it was gonna happen. How could that happen when you couldn't even talk about it to the community, you said that? So you hid behind that, you kept the public out of the whole process, I believe, on purpose. When are you gonna bring, and you had many opportunities to bring it out. If you negotiated the price and terms, that I believe you did, I suspect you did. Why have you not brought it out of the closed session yet? And when are you gonna do that? Thank you.
Thank you. So we're taking comments on the strategic plan process? Or anything else? It's Andrews. Yes, go ahead, wait, hold on, I might thank you, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Gregory Andrew, San Rafael Meadows. And my comment is that the evaluation criteria, I'm going to recommend that you add what I'm going to call available alternatives to the evaluation. I'm going to hear me out. I'm going to use three fifty Mary Dale as a good example. That project has a budget of over of eleven million dollars moving forward. Included in that is two million dollars a year annually for operation. The project is to serve sixty five people. That two million, that works out to uh, over thirty thousand dollars per person per year. Now, there is an available alternative, which is a rent voucher program. So let's say instead of this interim shelter program, you do a voucher program that allows twenty five hundred dollars a month for these homeless to get into a rental property. My understanding, I've no, I've I've studied homelessness about a month now is that what you call, what is called hard walls is the best solution for homelessness. It gets them into a place that they can feel safe, secure, validated, and it moves them out of homelessness. So a voucher program of twenty five hundred dollars a month for that sixty five people, that works out to thirty thousand dollars a year, not not over thirty thousand dollars a year, but thirty thousand dollars per person per year to get into. And you could do that voucher program and save the one point six million dollars you've got allocated for setup. And you could actually use that one point six million dollars to get more than sixty five people. Purchase the property, that's fine. Purchase the property for housing. But the point is available alternatives, and this is an available alternative. That should be part of the criteria for your valuing. Thank you very much.
Your comment, and then it's like over time. Okay. So we having, do you have everything you need? And we're gonna, I guess, short break. Where time check?
Do we need a break?
Do we need a break? Yeah.
Oh, it'd be great. We don't, because I have a presentation. I have to leave four and a half hours. You're going to need a different, someone else to give you a ride home, I realize.
No, I can take the bus.
I have to have. Okay, sorry. I totally realized when I give you a ride here. Someone needs to get councilwoman.
I'll take a ride from Christine.
I'm going to pass this around.
Wonderful problem that is.
This is a little bit of a jumpstart because some of these don't look like they're changing, although it's all up for discussion. Do you want to put those in for the back row as well?
There's just extra. There's one, one piece of paper.
One piece of paper. Two sided. So we're going to run through this as quickly as we, as quickly as we can. Council member Kurtz is up for vice mayor next year. Yay. Those of you who are, you'll see that I've moved the names over for existing appointments. And and left questions. So one, maybe just first, sheer efficiency, if we could go through the ones that are.
No, let's just go down the list.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say we could cross off the ones for twenty twenty six. If everybody's good with where they are already as proposed, then we'll just go to the question marks.
Let's just note it. Let's just go through.
Helpful each one. So Mary Beth on A Bag, Mayor Kate, council member, council member Yuren Scalati on Bay Wave, council member Bushy on Central Marin Sanitation Agency, climate action plan quarterly update forum, council member Yuren Scalati. This is Community Development Block Grant Funds County Priority Setting Committee.
I'm happy to continue unless somebody else would like to do it. It is kicking off right now. If anyone wants to do CDPGs.
I did it for two years. I feel like I've done my service for CDPG.
Thank you.
I've also done it for two years way back when.
If anyone's interested.
I won't be here for two years.
I've kind of said something you'd be interested in.
No.
Okay, Rachel.
All right.
Rachel.
You sure?
Just a clarification on this. Lindsay and I were speaking about this, whether this is intended to be the voting delegate, which I believe it is.
Well, so when we talked about it, we weren't sure what it's, it's now going to be the voting delegate going forward. And we'll add on on the back Cal Cities. So the voting delegate this year was so one of you was one of the.
We, it was decided as literally as we were going down to.
So you did it two years ago. You were the voting delegate. You are the voting delegate this past year.
I did it in twenty twenty.
And you did, right, right. So it's rotated.
Twenty one, right.
So Mary Beth, but you want to be the voting delegate this year because you're the only one that hasn't done it in the last rotations.
But isn't that the one going to Cal Cities?
Yeah, it's going to Cal Cities, but.
Would you like to do that?
Well, no, 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 no. But I'm just asking you first of all.
I'd like to. Uh, no, if it if it is my turn, I would.
Well, no, because they don't really have a turn on this one. So so going back, so council member Hill, you have done it. So if it was rotating, you would be the next up for the voting members.
Yeah, I'd prefer to defer until potentially twenty twenty seven.
Okay, so then that that you just did it. So council member Micah, we're keeping in the rotation. Does that work? Council member Micah, does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. Library Foundation Board, council member Bushy.
And it's voting delegate. Sorry, take away the question mark.
Yes, I know.
Clarified. Yeah, okay, that's all.
That is what it is. Got it.
I do, we had they that that twenty twenty five was right till?
I will change that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're in Clean Energy, uh, council member Yuren Scalati.
I have a question that do we want to have an alternate to that?
I um, I asked last year if anybody wanted to be an alternate and there was no interest, but yes, we can.
I may, you know, that board is already so large. I don't know that.
Adding another. No alternate, okay.
The E bike committee, I think, has resumed its work, correct?
Resume?
No, I'm sorry. It's over. It's done.
Yeah, done.
Okay, the same with the micro grid task force. Is that correct?
I've never participated.
Okay. San Rafael sanitation would remain Mayor Kate and council member Bushy. Smart would remain Mayor Kate. TAM Transportation Authority of Marin um, would remain Mayor Kate and council member Bushy as an alternate. So that's still good. And then Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, it's been Rachel. So question mark if anyone else is interested.
I mean, I am. We're heading into, this is a big, this one's a time commitment one because it is a because San Rafael is represented on the ZAC committee, most of the committee meetings, plus the the board meetings. And it's going into a big cycle. I'm happy to continue on it just because I have the the institutional history, but it is a great board to be part of if somebody else is interested.
So clarifying question, is the only one that the city needs to be on is the executive committee? Because, I mean, I'm slightly interested just because we have the other finance measures that we'll be looking at. It might be good to have that window on there. I don't know.
The only. It's not the only, it's it's a lot. Yeah, no, it's it's that, plus the board, plus the.
No, no, but the all the sub, but the requirements, of course, the board meetings. But I'm saying the requirements that San Rafael needs to be on the executive committee and of course attend the board meetings. But all the other subcommittee stuff that you have volunteered for.
Is the other is, yeah.
Are those requirements?
No, I don't. Okay. I'd have to go back. I think some of it might be written in that you, the San Rafael does participate because we are the largest taxpayer.
I know that for the executive, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, I know. I would have to go back and look to see.
My understanding of it is that council member needs to be on the board, the executive committee, the board level, that we've got to have fire chief on the ops committee or delegate, and then on the technical advisory committee, a staff person there. So we're at all three levels because San Rafael is so large.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's keep going through and then we can see.
Yeah, because I also be happy if we decide we also, we just want to rotate, just to rotate to as well.
Okay, the city school liaison committee, the city county schools has been, which I believe it was you last year, correct?
I'm Rachel.
And Mayor Kate.
Yeah.
Um, so it's another opportunity for.
So we were wondering if it just can be one person and it could be Rachel and then maybe an alternate would be Micah.
Sure.
Didn't feel that we needed both of us there.
Public meeting. So I just want to notice that this is, it's a Brown Act subcommittee. So just one member doesn't, it wouldn't be a standing committee.
We could have two and an alternate. So if you are not available, I will go.
We're just saying we have one. Have one.
Because I think.
Look in, we can look into it after this. We it it will come back on the fifteenth. And if there's any issue with that.
There's also a supervisor at the, so it's it's only the, there's only one supervisor and then it's two school board members. No, one school board member from each district. So we're actually probably matching what the other agencies are doing.
There's two from each school board.
Are there?
Yeah.
They don't always appear.
They're not always there. I mean, it's.
Okay, well. Okay, so Rachel and Micah.
Yeah.
Rachel and Micah.
Sure, sounds good.
Right.
And sorry, but if if you could just have one, which would it be?
Oh, I don't.
Either one.
Doesn't matter, whatever, whatever.
Okay, it's fine.
Yours, whatever they want to decide.
So the, there's a recommendation to create a new subcommittee, or actually, let me put it this way, to take the economic development, current economic development subcommittee and add community and housing to it. And then have homelessness stand alone as its own subcommittee. There's a couple of different reasons we're recommending this. One is the amount of content just from like housing and housing development and homelessness at the same time. The staff are having a really hard time getting all of that content to the same committee at the same time. And then there's this overlap with all the major development happening, interaction between economic vitality and development that that discussion is getting can get bifurcated. So that that was the recommendation. It makes a lot of sense to me. Um, what we've put down here is having council member Hill and Mayor Kate on the economic development and housing. And then um, on the homelessness, which would be a standalone, would be Mayor Kate and council member Kurtz. Thoughts?
I think this is the most important, these are the most important issues confronting the city. We absolutely need the the mayor. Um, and we absolutely need the district representative that's probably most closely uh, the district most closely involved um, in this economic development and and the housing and the interaction between the two.
Well, I'd like to put a plug in that when you talk about North San Rafael and the number and the housing and the economic pieces, there's a lot happening up there. I did like the model that we had mayor and vice mayor on this one because I agree, it's a really, really important conversation. And I haven't served on the economic one. And and so I would like the opportunity to be able to serve on that committee. Everyone, like, this is a great, this is a.
Everybody was.
It is a really important conversation. Because it does tie into everything that we're doing, you know, so many of the things that we're doing. And if we could just talk a little bit, I mean, I know the homelessness one is an important committee. But I'm wondering how operationalized it is at this point, where we're getting to an operational piece. And we have so many different committees between the HPSC and and Homeless Policy Steering Committee and some other ones that there is a level of participation. I'm wondering if where, as a committee, is the homelessness subcommittee adding value? Or is that one that has been sort of, is going to be either incorporated into the finance subcommittee, you know, issues and topics as part of finance, issues and topics related to housing, issues and topics. So I just want to see, because we haven't really I'm trying to figure out within our, with with like, within the housing, when we have the housing and homeless subcommittee, we've been talking about our NOFA. Uh, we've been talking about some other things. We haven't really been talking so much about homelessness because that's already built into our strategic plan. It's already built into our forty forty general plan as far as providing council direction. And I'm not sure how much council direction or guidance is happening within that subcommittee.
Part of our work plan does include a homeless strategic plan. So I do think, I mean, obviously, we can always change the committees around. And I know that that might get pushed, but right now it is currently on the work plan for twenty twenty six. So we need to have a committee. I mean, that's just.
Yeah, I I think I actually like it because I think homelessness is still like a very hot topic for, and it definitely one of the top priorities. And I think I agree that it's nice that we are taking it out of housing because it's a different conversation and different resources that you have to put in there. Um, I think it makes sense to add it to economic committee. Yes, economic, uh, uh, housing development, because I think especially now with the mixed uses, I think it's very related. I would also love to put a plug in there for myself to join that committee. Because of my history owning a business downtown, but also sixty percent of the revenue is in my district, economic revenue from taxes. And also housing is a huge uh, challenge as well for my district.
So one thing, so this came up last year as well. And so the role of the subcommittees is to enable staff to have some direction. We've been very clear in the committees that it's not the entire council at all. And there are definitely ones where council member Kurtz gave input and I gave different input, but that it helped staff know that there would need to have a very broad discussion when it comes to council. I'm wondering if part of this is maybe if we want to add a study session, because there is a real love of people rolling up their sleeves. And I hear dissatisfaction of being able to um, interact with the material just from the dais. And so I I don't know what that would look like. We did talk about having a housing workshop this past year. Now. Had it.
But we are having one in December of the plan.
December. But so I think maybe that's part of it. Because I agree with you. I think everyone has the same conversation came up last time. Everyone wants to really roll up their sleeves and.
And I think that's why we landed where it was mayor, vice mayor. Because it was just an easy direction to be able to say it's mayor, vice mayor in that role for that committee. And then we use study sessions, we use. And I and I agree, you're right, there is a lot happening in the homeless and we still, and and if we evaluate that mid year or whatever, and we see when it becomes more of a lift to manage a subcommittee. Because that is a lift also in terms of staff, in terms of managing all the different subcommittees, where we're at. And I and I totally support that.
So I guess what I'm hearing too, because I appreciate the consistency of what we came with last year around it follows vice mayor. So I I could see us doing that, but I can also see the value of of the bifurcation of homelessness subcommittee versus housing, because they are, while they have clear word connection, that their policies are very distinct.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Might I suggest that we even, uh, again, not to create committees for the sake of creating committees, but that that housing be considered its its own, separate from homelessness? Or do we keep it connected to?
Well, housing development is just so integral to economic.
I concur.
That's the, this is, this is the logical configuration. And the to keep retain the homelessness um, committee is necessary because those are really very, very different issues. There's you know, law enforcement treatment, you know, trying to get our partners to do more. I mean, it it's completely different issues.
Yeah, I agree.
I concur.
No, I'll retract my idea of not having a subcommittee. You're right. I think I'm just buried in it so much that it's, yeah, yeah.
I think it's worth, I mean, this is why we do this, is reconsidering the the structure. I think the issue really is, and if we look to the other side just for a second, kind of see the whole picture. Because I'm part of it is, I I mean, I would imagine like capacity, like part of the question is who has capacity, who has the interest? So considering that and measure P and council member Hill, where you are.
Well, that one, when you talk about that I would take over, so council member Hill would have the finance committee and the housing.
Oh, I may be wrong. So it would be you and.
Right, just from a capacity issue. And part of the other thing, so in twenty twenty six, and these do rotate. One of the things, the housing, but it's related to finance, is going to be looking at is the development fee structure. So there's a combo between those two as well. And again, that's what, and 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 I hear what you're saying. Uh, council member Kurtz, I don't want to dismiss the mayor, vice mayor, but I think it put us in in aligning it with one of the committees. I think it hamstrung us in an it took away optionality because this next year is going to be huge in in that. I mean, we we haven't nailed that thing down yet. We, as if we're doing it, staff has not nailed it down. We haven't been able to do it. So that was the other part of the thinking.
I like the tie in with the economic and housing. I think that is really important. And and again, I I we did this exact same conversation last year. And that's why we ended up again with mayor, vice mayor. Because it is such a high, and and that that continues to rotate. So it gives everyone the visibility and opportunity to participate in those conversations.
So two questions, well, a question and a comment. So I, so how will that work? Who's invited? Because I know the BID, the chamber participates in the economic committees. So once you add housing, who else is going to participate? So that's a question. The comment is that I think last year we also mentioned that we could. Um, the comment is that, I think last year we also mentioned um that we could rotate council members where you were always the constant one, that we would rotate in each meeting a different council member. Um, just to um participate in, you know, because every meeting is a different topic.
Yeah, if I may, that's what I was just confirming of our city attorney about. There was a conversation that we had last year, just around Subcommittee that are specifically required for the Brown Act, trying to make Mayor Kate would be serving on each one and have different council members on the others, and that's what I was just trying to figure out. Um, and we were, we had determined we would come back if there was any. After we looked back at that, that meeting and rewatched that to see exactly what it was and just make sure that there's no issues with the Brown Act that come up from having all of these different Subcommittees and different members serving or the same body on each. So we can come back on twelve fifteen, but that was the conversation from last year's retreat.
Okay, but, but I think what I heard you saying is that, that on the um, the council members would rotate within the year on a committee. I think that's the question, and I've never heard of that, because then it's not a Subcommittee.
It wasn't the rotation. Last year, I think the conversation was with throughout the entire appointment list, that there would be some rotation and that you might, you know, for folks to avoid being on the same committee for more, multiple years in a row. But with regard to these Brown Act Committees, that wasn't a part of the rotation, conversation.
But you can, I'm asking you for a clarifying question, can you rotate people within the year on a standing?
No, that's what we asked, I think that's what you're asking. Okay, so that was the question.
Um, and my first question, who will be attending these Committees? Who's invited from outside the city?
Well, they're open, public meetings, so anybody.
But, but I'm saying like, okay, so usually in the Economic Committee, right, you get like, uh, again, the BID, you get like the Chamber, merchants, whoever is interested in economic development. But now you're mixing it with housing or combining with housing. Um, so I assume it would be advocates for housing. I'm just thinking also from the community standpoint, if there's somebody from the BID that is interested in the local small business downtown, um, and you're bringing like a housing topic. I'm just trying to figure out how that.
Or a business owner from Northgate, right?
So I, I'm, I'm just thinking about like going down into the nitty gritty, how, how that will work.
Yeah, it's a good question. I, I think staff will have to think about that and circle back, because it, nothing automatically comes to mind that we would bring in other, you know.
Watch those videos, it seems like just people are invited in depending on the topic and potentially contributing to the presentation.
There are standing members in Economic Development from Hispanic Chamber, Chamber, BID, uh, and, and then I think there are a few standing invitations for nonprofits that show up. So I, I, I concur that there is a, a tradition, but obviously anyone can go up and it's topical. But if I can give some voice to um why I think it might be specifically important in twenty twenty six for there to be, and again, this is, has to do with me, but that, that the density of proposal around development in downtown is, is situationally a lot more dense. Um, although you brought up Northgate, and I think that it, it's true, Northgate has passed. The density of, of future development is, is not as dense as, as it is in, in District Two. So I would just, the only reason why I would advocate for that is that there are very specific impacts to the surrounding area of downtown.
Can I maybe, so process-wise, I'm hearing the council say that you want to continue the homelessness Subcommittee and that there, there is a synergy that I hear that you make sense to have Economic Development and Housing and Economic Vitality be in one committee. If that's, I'm hearing agreement from all of you. What I'm hearing though is that four of the five of you would love to be on the new Economic Development Housing. This happens, right? There is the, kind of every, usually there's one or two committees that everyone would love to be on and, and typically you can't rotate. And so what you may all need to do is, when you come on the fifteenth, you all can ruminate, you've now heard who wants on. When this comes back, then the council approves, you might, at that point, you might have to pull that one off and have a vote separately about who is going to sit on that committee and then vote on the, and approve the entire appointment. So I've seen councils do that sometimes when there is a hotly contested Subcommittee or um appointment that someone, that a number of folks want. So I just throw that out as a process, probably not something you have to solve today, but you might have to have a separate vote on it.
Sounds like Nevada. It sounds like Nevada. Saw that meeting.
We would not do that. We'll work this out.
Okay, I apologize.
No, 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 I think it's good to think of all the different options.
Okay, are there any others that we need to discuss?
And, and I'm assuming that you don't get an alternate then, when you have two council members because of the Brown Act.
So are we leaving it, or are we?
I'd still like to advocate for Mayor and Vice Mayor, it's a one-year rotating role. We know we rotate the, we have a, we have a really good cycle around the Vice Mayor role. And I would, like, I think that makes it really, really clean and clear to communicate to people um, in terms of what that role is and what goes with that role.
So from a staff direction standpoint, is, it's pretty tough without like a straw poll or, or something.
We can take a formal, there can be a motion, I mean, we, we can, you know, I, I think what's been presented here works. And I'm trying, I want to have maximum optionality, because um, I mean, just to play it out. If it was the Mayor Vice Mayor, then you, Rachel, would be probably removed from the homelessness Subcommittee and then HPSC, like, there's, there's, there's dominos that start to fall all the way across the board. So, I mean, we can make a motion as presented or however, and we can vote it, I mean, there's five of us.
Happy to move it.
What are you moving, you need to be.
I move that um, uh, Mayor Colin and Councilmember Hill uh are the are appointed to the new Community Economic and Housing Subcommittee.
Conversation, please.
Okay, so we are going to be doing this every year.
I know.
So I will make another motion to, with um Rachel's proposal, that is the Mayor and the Vice Mayor every year. You can't make another motion until counter motion?
I'm just wanting to confirm, I did not hear a second.
Well, who is? I'll make a second to Mayor Bush's motion.
Okay, um, if you are in favor, the motion is presented, you may raise your hand.
Public comment before you vote?
No, that's, there should be public.
Disunderstood, the councils.
Go ahead, Mr. Andrews. On one item, so we're voting.
Just a question, and Mayor, I, please don't take any offense, but this question. Mayor is identified on every single standing Subcommittee. And I'm curious about that, uh, I'm curious, and I think I know why, but I'm curious about that. And I'm just wondering if share the wealth, share the burden, you know, divide and conquer is is, there's five of you, so is, is, is there, I, I assume that there's a good rest and, and I you're, the mayor is very capable, very dedicated, it's nothing about that, it's just one person on all committees versus splitting it up. Just curious about that, thank you.
Question which staff will answer when we're completed, yes, Mr. Dickinson?
Yes, um, this is um regarding the SMART um Subcommittee, if you remember of. Uh, and it relates to the three fifty Marydale again, because that is right up against the right SMART right of way. There are a lot of leaky borders there onto the SMART right of way. There are a lot of opportunity sites for homeless encampment, encampments. People are already sleeping out there uh on a regular basis. So do we have influence through you to get SMART to tighten that right away? Entrance up, people can get in there very easily, the fencing is not that great. And it also relates to the Caltrans right behind the three fifty Marydale. Uh, if this project should go forward, there are lots of opportunities for people to camp out there. We know that three fifty Marydale will attract people, looking for food, for services, for companionship, for friendship. So we, I think the, the project itself has a lot of merits. But it's the surrounding area, the gray areas around it that are concerned. And I've talked to the SRPD, they don't have jurisdiction over those areas. They can't do anything about the Caltrans, they can't do anything about the SMART. But you as our representative on the SMART Board could, if it's appropriate for us to go through the city in your role as being on the SMART Board, to influence the SMART Board, because we don't always get a good response from them in things going on. I'm, I'm, it's in Flood Zone Six, I'm a member of the Flood Zone Six Advisory Board. That's also an issue we run into all the time with SMART. So I'm just looking for some help there through you with SMART, thank you.
Um, staff, do you want to respond? I think that is a good comment about that one of the blessings of being the only elected, directly elected at-large person on this committee. I have an outsized role, but.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, Lindsay, did you, you said something earlier, I wanted, maybe that would help to clarify and I can add to it.
Yeah, there, so there can be some issues with Brown Act, with having multiple people on different boards where a topic is brought through Subcommittee process to the City Council, where more than three members are hearing a topic and providing recommendations or feedback to staff on any one specific item. So the Mayor, Mayor, having Mayor Kate on each one of the boards or commissions kind of corrects some of that, or, sorry, the Subcommittee's. Yeah, it prevents some of that from happening. Um, and that's been the process previously is the directly elected mayor has served on all the ad-hocs or standing Brown Act Subcommittee meetings.
Okay. So we had, do you have a public comment? There was a motion on the floor, so it had been a motion, and then there'd been a second, and I was just going to have a, can I have us raise our hands?
Uh, I'll call just.
Okay.
Just want to make sure. Vice Mayor Bushy? Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
No.
Councilmember, you done, Scalotti?
No.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries three zero.
Three two.
Three two.
Good with words, not with math.
Apologize you guys.
That takes care of that. So to moving forward, uh, Finance Subcommittee, homelessness, sea level rise and proposed Measure B, I corrected to be Councilmember Bushy and Mayor Kate, my apologies. Any interest or question about the Finance Subcommittee, the new standalone, not stand ad hoc but homelessness Subcommittee and Sea Level Rise Committees, anyone interested in any of those roles?
Which one, sorry?
On the backside, Finance Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Homelessness? Or Sea Level Rise, which you are currently slated to continue. You're good with those? Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Kurtz?
That's fine.
Member Bushy?
Oh, good.
Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question to Councilmember, you done Scalotti? How, did you meet last year for the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee?
Uh, yeah.
Well.
We meet every quarter, we're meeting next week.
Are you talking about the county one?
Oh, yeah.
I don't mean the county one, I mean the City of Centrefill one, I.
We don't really have one for the city. Oh, you mean like a Subcommittee, uh, oh, not like a community, but like Subcommittee.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little bit confused, because that's, I thought it was just kind of like. No, no, I thought it was.
There was, there, I think this might have been a COVID era thing, like there was a Standing Committee and then it was informal, and then we talked about it last year, it was like, oh no, this is a standing, similar to homelessness, we should have it be as a formal Subcommittee.
But in this Subcommittee, usually we have, we invite, it's an open meeting where people can participate. And I don't remember, to me, it's more like you and I with Cory and, you know, Aiden talking about Sea Level Rise, but it's not a committee. Like for instance.
I'll go back. And if, it may not be included on the second meeting in December for appointment, and if so, it's because there hasn't been a meeting or there's no need for continuing to be a Standing Committee meeting for the Brown Act. Great, that's all.
Okay, okay. So then, do we have one or do we don't?
For now, we will, until the fifteenth, the twelfth.
Okay. Go down to the MCCMC, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm going to be standing in front of fifty people at noon, so.
We're going to move.
So Eli, it, just so you know, he is still on the Executive Committee, because there's an emeritus at MCCMC. So his name is still on the Executive Committee.
For twenty twenty six.
Yes.
Is that correct?
It's there, but I would say it's functional.
And then the Legislative Committee, is that something you're still?
I'm happy to continue if anyone else is interested in, um.
But I was going to say, I used to be on the climate uh policy for MCCMC and we haven't met, but I would like to propose to reestablish that one for MCCMC.
So why don't you wait till it's reestablished through MCCMC and then we put it on here?
Okay.
I'm not going to put it on here without it.
I just want to make sure, you know.
Yep, and then, um, just to clarify, under Marit transit, uh, Councilmember Mica reminded me that she's still, she's an alternate.
Yes.
But she is an appointed alternate by MCCMC, I don't even know how you represent that there, because we're not the ones that chose her as an alternate. MCCMC chose her as an alternate.
It's right there.
I don't know, however you want to do that, or you just leave it listed and it doesn't matter that we.
Maybe just put the alternate.
But she's not an alternate.
For Marit transit, not for the city.
Right.
Non-city appointment.
And do you want to add in the Calcity, and it's done for the last year, but for Calcity Policy Committees, if we get us selected to include those as well?
Yeah, that would be great.
Please, that would be, whenever it ends up the.
So, no, no one will hear, but.
So they'll, pre- last year, you were on, what were you on?
The environmental.
You're environmental and I was on a community service.
Okay.
And that there'll be a restart for twenty twenty six?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great, thank you guys for doing.
The last thing, I just want to circle back, we didn't have, back on wealth, we're in Welfare Prevention Authority.
I mean, I'm happy to continue on that.
Sure. But I want to find out more about the time, I thought you were going to come back as to what Centrefill is.
Actual requirement.
Actual requirement, and then you and I can talk about me and present it.
Okay.
December.
Okay.
Great, the last thing, I know you need to leave, is that we're proposing that we have a standardized meeting schedule for all of these Brown Act Subcommittee meetings, schedule them for the entirety of the year.
Yes.
The goal would be to have four to six meetings every year, based on seasonality and business need. So kind of, um, it's not necessarily every other month, that hasn't been working for a lot of different reasons. So I will send out, I will meet with each of you. Availability has been really critical, so I would say these are also tentatively, we've got to land on dates and times that everyone can make and then forecast and then work around, so we're going to work really hard to make sure we can make that happen and make it really functional and effective and plan to add for the community. So we're going to propose some dates and times, and we'll just have to work logistically on trying to land the plane on those.
I thought they were quarterly.
They're not, they're not all quarterly, they've been, um, that's part of what we're. Standardize them. Um, I would much rather have six meetings on the, on the agenda and not have content and have to cancel one or not have it than trying to add one on all the time. So we're going to work really hard this year to get it in shape, and um, so we'll look forward to having those conversations. And it, we should bring them, I'm looking to forecast and bring that schedule up when we do the improvement, so that it's.
Whatever, I mean, that seems like over to five.
Um, before adjourn, just, I think, thank you, I know that you're just, you've helped both prep, you work with the city manager and having your additional viewpoint as we um create these internal and external systems has been really, really helpful, so I just want to. Thank you for being here, and um, thank you all for being here in the mornings, want to give Councilmember Hill a ride home. This meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, good luck.
I'm really worried, because I kept sending in my um PowerPoint and they haven't responded, I'm worried I'm going to walk in there and they're going to be like.